So, everybody ready?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome. This is a special meeting for the select board of the City of Cituit. Our primary topic this evening is going to be for interviewing law firms for our town council representation, but before that, we do have some matters. So it is Thursday, October 19th, and may I kind of wish you to accept the agenda. So move by Miss Connelly, second by Miss Cantfield, all in favor?
Aye.
And before we proceed, I want to review our diversity statement, which is the City of Cituit Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is a disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our community members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. So with that, I will just move to the scheduled items, which is to discuss and vote the approval for the activity at the Senior Center by Foss, and we have some Foss representatives here. If you want to come up to the table, that would be great. How are you?
I'm good. Thanks.
Good. Just your name, not just for the record. So we should.
My name is Carol King, and I live at 17 Will Park Drive. I am the events coordinator for the Friends of Cituit seniors, and we are respectfully requesting an extension of hours for the Cituit Senior Center on October 21st, 2023, for the upcoming Brown Brothers Harvest Dance. The event will include entertainment from 6:30 to 9:30 and one additional hour of building use for cleanup until 10:30.
And that's this weekend?
Yes.
And it does say here that you have notified a butters. Was that recently?
Yes. Last Tuesday or Wednesday, a week ago.
Okay. And it seems like all the entertainment is inside.
Yes.
Is that true?
Yep.
It must close and it'll be done. Okay. Let me just show it. Will we hear for both as entertainment and liquor, or just entertainment?
Both.
Both.
Oh, I'm sorry. The liquor is taken care of by cocktails from women.
Okay. He's a state caterer.
I'm sorry?
He's a state caterer, so he doesn't need a.
Oh, so he doesn't need to come in? Oh, interesting. Okay. So just entertainment? Questions? Any other questions? Do you have any questions? Nice to see you guys. First off, how are the ticket sales going?
They're going pretty well.
I know that you're aware of this, but I'd be honest if I didn't remind the board that, you know, you're here because you have to get a special permit to go past the 8:30, which is allowed under the building use for music, and you're asking for 11:30. So the board has received a copy of that. I don't have any problem with this. I'd love, I wish I were around Saturday, but I have to say that it is bad practice to advertise and promote an event until you've gotten permission to do so. So I just want to remind your group, because I know you'll be back, and you'll definitely be back for something else, that to be mindful of that. So it doesn't, we have in the past, there have been people who've come in that have advertised events, and we've said, you know what, you can't really do that. I'm not inclined to do this and that, but I just wanted to make a statement that you guys are mindful of the use, especially because you're Friends of Cituit seniors, you're probably going to be using this building again, to give us a little more time in case there is some concern with the butters.
Absolutely. It was a misunderstanding part of the voted directors of the Friends Group. We thought that a year ago, when we went before the board for the same thing, we thought that it was a permanent thing.
It would continue.
Yep.
We always like to revisit, because you never know, in case you misbehaved the year before. Could I clarify? You said 11:30, now it's 10:30. Oh, no, no, I misspoke. Higher. It says, "Music played in the building is not allowed after 8:30 or 9:30 if special permission is granted, and the function may not be held past 10:00." But you said just now, 11:30. Yeah, I think it's instead of, yeah, I just want to clarify, yeah, just so we all understand, it's 10:30. There will be no, I mean, no, no, at 11:30. So you had it at 9:30, and we need to be out of the building by 10:00.
Correct.
Yes, okay. Just to clarify.
That was my one. Nope, I appreciate that. Karen?
No. Good. It's just your role, right? Anything additional?
I did not have anything to mention.
All right. So it would be, it would be an extension, special permission to our policy, correct? We're all open. Correct, yes. Okay. Did you say how your ticket sales are going?
They're going pretty well. We were hoping to have more sold by now, but we'll be selling tickets at the door, so I don't think that we're going to have as many people as we had a year ago.
Okay. That's too bad. Well, hopefully the level will go up to 10.
That would be nice.
Yeah. Are there any comments from the audience? Yes, name and address.
Hi, Jennifer Kim. 20th period of Cituit. It says 10 p.m. here, can be extended to 10 p.m. and not 10:30, so it should end by 9:30 with a half an hour for cleanup.
Well, I think we could think about, I think it's okay to allow them extra time. I think the intent is to allow them time to get out and clean the building. They're not going to be disrupting everything, so we do have that permeating to extend it just a little bit to allow them to get out. I mean, 30 minutes to clean up is pretty precarious. I don't know, anybody else? Just what time of the music starts at 9:30, and then the guests will be alerted that it's time to leave, basically? Yep.
Can I also get more information on the alcohol pouring license? It's, see, that was approved during.
It didn't have to be, because they're using a state-approved vendor. That's, or it doesn't go through us from a permitting agency, so typically when someone comes before us, we have to approve that.
Oops, sorry. So a state-approved vendor can go and serve at any function hall or property without a permit?
Without coming before us, right?
I can send you some information tomorrow, but yes, if you look at our caterer list that we use repeatedly, and Cockler, like Jim, is a repeat person, he has a 12-seat catering license, which means he doesn't need a one-day by local licensing because he has a state license. But he is on our list. We have his liquor liability, his tip certification. We have everything that a one-day would get. He just doesn't need approval from the board. They just need to notify us, which we have.
Which they did.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. And just one other request is that, this has happened a few times, that they do proceed with functions, and they're, you know, the rules and policies are here, and I'm just wondering that, you know, if they could just try to follow that a little more accurately.
Yeah. Also, I think your heard Miss Cantfield make that request if you get in meetings, so I think, I have confidence that they'll do that for future events.
Yeah. And also, was there a request for police detail or anything for the traffic and active vending?
No.
Okay, well, you did.
All right, great. So I have a motion, or any other questions? A motion? Move to approve to you of the City of Cituit Senior Center on Saturday, October 21st, 2023, for Friends of Cituit seniors' harvest dance fundraiser with music from 6:30 to 9:30, and event cleanup until 10:30 p.m. Move by Miss Connelly, second by Miss Cantfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And thank you for all you do to raise money to support the seniors. We appreciate it.
We're happy, Joe.
And thank you all very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, we will move to our interviews. Do we want to?
Okay.
Okay. Adam line. I bet you know some people. I'm welcome.
Thank you. Would you like a media?
Yes. I'd see.
Sounds good.
Hopefully you found your way to Cituit. Okay?
We did.
Yes, great. Karen, you good? Well, that was the first test. Okay. I'm good. Yeah. Mark. You're just getting some water. Hi, Mark. My name is Mark Karen. I'm chair of the select board. Now, our select board introduce themselves, and well, thank you for coming on down. So we do, our vice chair, Andrew Boerich, is running a little late, is delayed, Susan can run in. But he apologizes that he couldn't get here until 6:00, so he should be there a little bit early. So Susan?
Susan Harrison, I'm part of the select board.
Nice to meet you.
Karen Connelly, member of the select board. And the other Karen, Karen Cantfield.
Nice to meet you. I'm Tom Harrington.
I'm Brian Burtrum.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you for submitting your response. So I thought what we would do is, you know, give you folks, you know, 10, 15 minutes, give us a nice overview, refer why you think you're a good fit for Cituit. Your office is a little bit far away, so I'm sure you'll want to hear a little bit about proximity and how you plan to, you know, represent us all being that far away. And we put together some standard questions that we're going to ask every firm, just five, but then a little bit of for individual personal questions as well. Sound good? Okay?
Good evening again. As we said, I'm Brian, and this is Tom. I propose as the lead, Tom is the back now. I don't know if it hit 15 minutes. I think the first thing to know about our firm is we try to keep it a little bit to the point. We don't, I think there's a lot of lawyers out there who maybe talk too much and don't listen enough, and I can promise you that won't be us. So we'll be interested in getting to your questions, because we're always more interested in what the client has to say than hearing ourselves talk to you. But a little bit about us, as you observe the law firm, and the Ariens and Harrington is based as well as, although we obviously have clients all over the state, and actually the lead town council form, so you're not as far as four, so we'll be able to manage that just fine. And I think our part of this client is Stockbridge, which is just about in the state of New York. So we do service the entire state. You know, as we get into things, we can talk a little bit about how it would work. We're a law firm of 12 attorneys. We currently work for 13 towns and general town council services. We do special town council services for clients from time to time as well. And I'd say the vast majority of our work is for municipalities, cities and towns in the Commonwealth. We occasionally do work for private clients, but we're really affirmative, focused on municipalities, on local government. It's what we like to do, and it's what we believe in. We've been doing that for decades now. So when we come to you tonight, we basically represent ourselves as being a full-service law firm for local governments. You know, we have, all of our attorneys are sort of conversant in general legal principles for towns, but we do have attorneys that specialize in different things, too. That makes our approach toward a little more efficient. And it also means that, you know, even though it's me and Tom sitting here right now with you, I think one of the big things that we try to do early and quickly with our clients is to get everyone in the firm sort of introduced to their respective counterparts, because we really do offer our services as a team, and we don't want anyone to hesitate to work with any of our attorneys. And it oftentimes gets to the point where when we have specialists, people are comfortable. They have a request for legal services that's approved by whoever it has to be approved by, usually a town administrator, you know, they may reach out directly to that attorney. And we really encourage that. My role as lead counsel is not to be an expensive person who relays telephone calls. My role is really to be the expert in Cituit and to bring that to the table and to make sure that the work gets done on time promptly and that we're responsive. But we really encourage sort of the efficiency of our individual attorneys, all of whom are really good at what they do, working with local governments, collaborating with you. It's a team effort. It's not, you know, it really cannot emphasize enough that it's not, you know, we call legal counsel, and they work in the silo, and they give us an answer, and we never get to interact. Most local problems, most local issues, most local initiatives are best resolved as a team, and that's the way we really approach things. So again, we have 12 attorneys, and sort of the other, the other reason I like to sort of say that is that the 13 towns, we think that's a good balance. A, we can make sure we can cover all the town meetings for all the towns, and we have roughly the same number, which can, you know, be something of an issue in the spring when everyone's having their town meetings. But, you know, the other point to that, too, is, is again, if you're giving individualized attention to your clients, you know, if you have a firm that has, you know, two or three times the number of towns as they do attorneys, that becomes increasingly difficult. And, you know, not only just getting the attorney's time, but, you know, overworking attorneys who have too much on their plate. And so, you know, we really do like to emphasize also that we're a firm that tries to keep that roughly equivalent, and we do a pretty good job of that. And make sure that we give you the attention that you deserve and that you want, and also make sure that our attorneys are engaged, they're not overworked, they're really excited to collaborate with you, and they work on a project, and that we really give you the level of service that we want to give you and that you deserve and respect. So, Tom, did you have anything to add to that?
Sure. I'll add a few things. So I'm Tom Harrington. So I echo everything Brian said, and one thing I'd like to emphasize is the idea that in our model, we want to have the town expert, which would be Brian with me as his backup. So we want this Cituit expert, because, you know, quite frankly, if anyone can Google a statute or a regulation at this point, so that's not really the value add. You have a question, and we'll provide you the answer, but we also want to understand and have someone on staff who's, you know, working with your town administrator or your planning director, whoever it is, and understanding the nuance to the question or the subtext to the question, because, you know, there's big answers and there's, you know, the little kind of more necessary answer, and we want to provide that. That's the, that's the kind of the fun part of this, is working with a town and helping that town move its goals forward, as opposed to kind of sitting behind a computer and, you know, banging out answers as fast as you can. That's, we specifically don't do that. We specifically kind of designed our firm to take fewer clients, and quite frankly, probably make a little less money than some other attorneys, but we want a quality of life outside of work for our employees, and we also want to enjoy the work and bring a high level of competence to what we do. I service lead counsel in Wellesley, Littleton, Carlyle, Templeton. I'm missing one there. Norfolk, that's, sorry. And so I, you know, I have kind of a little more help on my side of things, but it's, it's, I'm an expert in those towns. I've worked, I've worked with Littleton since 1990, worked with Wellesley and Carlyle since about 2013, 2014. Norfolk and Templeton are both within the last three to five years, and I really enjoy it every bit, you know. And we hope we get to work with you, and we hope you get the, you know, you'll choose the best counsel, and that's kind of what we see this is about. You need to find who you're going to be comfortable with, and we hope that's us, and if it's not, we hope you make it right there.
Thank you. Before we get to the standard questions, why did you apply to Cituit? Since you try to keep your portfolio short, what did you see about Cituit that attracted you to apply?
I bet we have two different answers to you.
Okay.
So I think Cituit is a good town for us, because it will present us with some interesting legal issues. You know, we've worked with other coastal towns before. We've worked with Warren, we've worked with Beverly, and we've worked with Marblehead on various projects, we've worked with Wainup on various projects, and so that's kind of exciting to us. I would also say it fits our profile. I see Cituit kind of as a Wellesley, Needham, Norfolk, a bigger version of Norfolk, but you have interesting problems. I mean, that in the nicest way.
That's a nice word. Very well put.
So it's, so it's, it would be, so it's a, it's a nice challenge for us. It's a, it's a, it's a good fit for us. And, you know, we like, you know, Templeton, which is an entirely different town than this, is also fun. So it's, I think what we're not looking for is the same town over and over again, but Cituit, it's a nice size, I think, for us, and I think we can bring a lot of talent and experience to it.
Yeah. I would echo all of that, and I would just add, too, that in researching your town, you should be commended, it was very easy to figure out what's going on in this town in terms of transparency, in terms of running things. I mean, you know, we did not have a difficult time, and to me, that's always sort of like a green flag, yeah, that's a town I want to work for, because, you know, all of our attorneys, again, we largely do local government, we believe in that, and we think that it's good to help them. So we sort of looked at this town and said, yeah, this is, this is a town that fits our profile, and it's a town that we think they would have a lot of fun, you know, working for you and helping you achieve whatever goals it is that you set out for us.
I enjoyed your YouTube, your weekly YouTube.
Oh, I just, I'm only, we take turns.
Yours is the last.
Jim's the consistent. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you for that. Thank you for the feedback on transparency. That's important to us, and we've worked on that for years, and we have a great staff all the way out there, really worth it for that. So I think we'll do the five standard questions first. Do you want to start with one? We'll just go down. I was thinking that we could each, you know, take one. Do I have to go over that? Nope. Whatever one you want. I'm going to start with, in your words, just describe to us, I mean, you've given us an outline of what you bring to the table, but stepping back a little further, what do you think is the appropriate role for town council? We come to you with a situation, a problem, and a question. What, how do you define your role?
You know, I like the word counselor, because it is sort of counselor. I think that we're not, you know, we're not your typical mentor, right? Where you go out and say, I have a question, just give me the solid answer. You know, a lot of times, the role of town council is to listen first, because the way that you may perceive a problem, or the way that you may see the issue, may not be the best way to get to an answer for the town. And so, you know, the role of town council, you know, in my opinion, it goes a little bit beyond legal, and then we're a member of the team. And what we're trying to do is to implement whatever initiative you have, or solve whatever problem you have, or otherwise sort of do whatever it is that the town wants to do. And it's not just a legal question. We have to understand the context, we have to understand the goal, and then we can contribute as a member of the team to actually find at least the legal piece to make that happen. Now, obviously, you know, sometimes there's going to be situations where it's like, no, we just can't do that. Hopefully those are rare, but sometimes that does happen with the law. And there's going to be other times where it's a straightforward question, where the legal answer is, this is what it is, you know, let's not create a big building event out, and here you go, and we can move on. But in my experience, there's a lot of opportunity for a lot of things that towns do, for town council to be part of the team, you know, sort of find new, different, or better ways of doing what you're trying to do, and sort of helping with that navigation. So that would be my concern, to what the role of town council is.
So I'll echo that, and I'll provide a little bit of my own spin. So, you know, kind of, one of our themes is we want to enjoy what we do, and so one of the questions I often ask, and I like to, I love to get here with my town administrators or my select board, or whoever I happen to be working with, is, don't ask me the question. Tell me what you want to do. I'm much more interested in what you hope to accomplish, and then let me figure out whether that's the question or it's another question, if we can come at it entirely differently. But I, I, I think one of my strengths is that I'm a creative thinker, and so I think I can bring that to help you. I mean, I've been doing this a long time, so I know the law, but I also have seen how to attack problems in different ways, and that's, to me, that's the joy, is tell me what you want to do, tell me what you're concerned about, and then let us see if we can put the structure in place to get you there. As Brian said, sometimes the answer's no. You know, sometimes it's like, oh, you can't do that. But more often than not, there's a way to do that, or, you know, a way to get you close or look at it through a different sense. And what we're, honestly, what we're not looking for is, you know, we're going to get an email twice a month with a question, and they want the answer by email. You know, it's, that, that's not, that's, there's, I think there's a lot of firms that do that really well, and I think we can't do that, but we want to be more, we like to be more.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Miss Cantfield, that was number four. I'm going to stand on that a little bit. One, I think the intentions of that question, too, is to understand during town meetings, the special town meetings, we typically have counsel present.
Yeah.
So how do you approach town meeting? What do you really feel your role is there when you are asked to apply on a certain proceeding during town meeting?
You want to leave us all over for sure? Sure. So, so the approach to town meeting, so I see town meeting as kind of the single most important event for my clients, right? Because you're my client, this is your time before the whole town, and so my goal is to make sure that process runs as smoothly as possible. And, you know, and honestly, you know, and make you look as good as we can make you look as, you've worked, I know you all put in a ton of work, and it's, can be hard to put in that much work and then get to a town meeting, and it's, you know, it's like, ooh, that's, we worked an awful lot to get that result. So that's, that's not what we want to do. We want to get you to the right place, and it starts with, it starts with first, making sure that we're crafting the warrant, and honestly, and I'll tell you truthfully, we handle this, we have 13 towns, we have 13 different kind of processes that we go to, because this is very much your process. You know, we'll come in and we'll say, you write it that way, but we think you should write it this way, and you'll say, we've done it that way for 50 years, and we're going to say, then let's give it that. You know, every town has their kind of own idiosyncrasies, and we want to respect that. That's, this is your town, so.
It's worked, right?
Right. We'll, we'll tell you if we think you should do it differently, and you'll tell us, so what, we like it that way. And that's a fine answer, right? So, but anyway, so we want to start with the warrant. We want to build that for success, so that, and, and part of the thing that we'll talk to you about is making sure that we have enough time to accomplish what you want to accomplish. We're not going to slow you down, because the legal piece is rounding the slowdown, but, you know, the idea that we're going to do a major zoning change, and we come up with the idea 10 weeks before town meeting presents problems that are not insurmountable, but we need to talk about, okay, here's what we need to do. You're on this kind of timeframe, here's what we need to do. So we want to start with the warrant, and then we want to work with the motions. And, you know, going back to our theme, you can send me motions, and I can put them in A-plus form, but if I don't have a conversation with you about what you're trying to accomplish, I haven't done my best work for you. I want to have the conversation. I want to sit with you, or I want to sit with Jim and say, okay, what are we really trying to get to? So let's make sure that when we do that motion, we kind of box out what we don't want to have happen and included what we do want to have happen. So that's, that's the strategy part that we want to do. Now, I think your question was, if I'm sitting at a town meeting, or Brian's sitting at a town meeting, and someone asks a question, what's our role? We're going to take our lead from you on that. I mean, I see my role at town meeting is, I'm there to answer the moderator's questions because the moderator's running the meeting, and if he or she needs support, I want to support them. My select board is there. It's your meeting. You called that meeting. It is your meeting, so I want to make sure that I'm helping you in any way I can. If there's a question from the audience, I suspect you're going to want me to answer it. And how do I phrase this? I mean, there's a lot of different ways to answer that question, but I need to, I'm going to do it given an honest answer, but, but I want to know what our goals are going into that, right? Because I don't want to get up there and start riffing, because that never, never goes well.
We appreciate that.
Yeah.
That's a really, so we appreciate that. Okay. Thank you. Did you want to ask one of the standard questions? Karen? Can you provide a recent example of when your team demonstrated a high level of responsiveness Can you provide a recent example of when your team demonstrated a high level of responsiveness to a client? Explain. So a real life instance of something that was challenging and that, you know, you felt still you handled it well.
Sure, I can do that one actually. So you may or may not be aware that, you know, the state right now is housing a number of homeless persons in hotels. And we did have the issue in Borden where we sort of found out about that in every way but from the state would be the best way to put it. You know, you hear the rumors, you read the newspaper stories, you know that it's happening. And in like a number of communities, Borden has board health regulations that limit the occupancy, it's a temporary occupancy. And so, you know, we did have members of the public speaking to us like board, board help on that issue. And we, we sort of had to navigate that with the state agency in a very short timeframe in a dynamic that was kind of tough because we didn't know enough about what was going on. And so, you know, putting the legal advice aside because that was privileged, you know, we did have to sort of work with the board health and work with the health department in town with some collaboration with the select board because they're getting on it too, figure out, okay. It may very well be that the state can do this, but how do we get from sort of the start line to the finish line to make sure that we've done what we need to do to enforce our own regulations? If that's not the case, get the information that we need. And so, you know, what we ended up doing, this is, you know, you can read all about it in the Cape News, you know, the board of health ended up sending a seven day warning letter to the hotel owner that they were going to enforce, but they did stay their hand, they didn't start doing it right away. And we immediately sent a copy of that letter to the O H L C who was administering the program and said, look, state, you can't sit there on the corner and be silent, you need to actually tell us what's going on. And that, you know, and then I subsequently had conversations with their attorneys. But it ended up working out pretty well on an issue that really bubbled up quickly on us. You know, we got the response from the state that we wanted, you know, we determined that, in fact, we could not enforce the regulation, state oftentimes has that pesky power of being immune to our regulations. In that case, it was, but the process had a lot of value because now we have something on the state's letterhead that actually established what was going on. It was a proper basis for us making that determination, was an indication of the immunity because a government immunity has to be invoked, it can't be waived. And ultimately, I think, you know, the, the issue has actually calmed down, we haven't really heard much else about it right now. I mean, there's many other issues with hotels, don't get me wrong, many of them putting burdens on municipalities. But that was an issue that just came up very quickly through, I think initially, public comment that we sort of had to work through quickly and get a response from the state quickly. And, you know, I, I feel happy with the response that we gave at legal services, but it really was, as I started from the beginning, a collaborative team effort between, you know, the town governments, giving the board health what it needed and sort of working through an issue that was a legal problem at its core, but had a whole bunch of other stuff going on around it and that you had to navigate and be aware of.
And I'll, I'll give a simple, simpler answer from my side. So, one thing that I tell to my clients and Brian tells his clients is, you, you get our cell phone number and juice it. And, you know, we don't, we know you're not going to call us all the time, I still have plenty of time for TV, I'm getting my fill, so we won't worry about that. But it, last week, there was a, it's a contentious planning board hearing in one of the towns and we've got a relatively good planner and things were going a little wonky at hearing. And what I always say is, you know, I would rather get a 10 minute call, just hit pause, you know, just say, we're going to recess for 10 minutes, give me a call, 10 minute call, as opposed to the next day, you're trying to figure out how we're going to unwind. And so, it was, it was a 10 minute response, but we gave them the answer they needed at a time so that they could proceed. And, you know, it's, things like that happen all the time. And it's, it literally, you know, you're never going to talk to us for two hours, right? It's, give me a call, I don't care if it's, if it's, if it's, if I can't take the call, then I won't pick up and I'll text you back and tell you what's going on. But give me a call, I can probably help, I probably know the answer and we can just be done. And so, and those are, you know, those can be kind of nice, I oftentimes give a little snack after those because I please myself, you know, but it's, it was a quick call, we handled it, you're done, you feel good, I feel good. Yeah.
Will you follow up?
No, but we'll see. Town planner is smiling. She needs one speech though.
I appreciate that response. She did, I saw her respond. Susan, did you want to ask?
Yeah, I'll ask that question. What do you think is the biggest legal risk for municipalities today? And can you explain?
I feel like the landscape is littered with them, to be quite honest. You know, I think that one of the biggest risks right now is just managing legal services and managing everything that comes along with the increasing size of governments. This is a state that is becoming densely populated, towns get bigger and, you know, my, my background is actually as an assistant attorney general and the administrative constitutional law division of the attorney general's office. I can tell you that the state is getting no less bureaucratic or complicated. And a lot of that is coming down municipalities still, you know, whenever you have to do a project, you need a permit or you're subject to D E P regulations for something, you're going to do this or that. Towns are increasingly becoming very sophisticated business for people who try to, oftentimes service volunteers and that's, that's a very difficult thing. And so, you know, there's all the traditional legal risks of litigation and of, you know, not being able to get done what you need to get done. But I, I would actually say that in this landscape, you have to be careful, you know, when you work with council that everything is still managed well because it is very easy to go down rabbit holes, it is very easy with these complex problems to have sort of one person working in a silo, another person working in a silo. And so, managing sort of legal is part of the team, particularly where the model now is a good model, is having law firms instead of maybe a single individual or somebody like that doing legal services. Managing that process is increasingly important, both to get the results you want, to avoid excessive legal spend, and to make sure that, you know, you solve a problem, you're solving the entire problem and not just a narrow problem. So it's, it's not really, you know, a legal issue because honestly, we've worked with enough towns that I think if you polled our towns, each one would have a different legal risk that's at the top of their, their heap. I think it's a more generalized observation of the increasingly difficult, you know, difficulty of running a town, it's getting more complicated and the importance of aligning legal as a member of the team, the town administrator, rather than just sort of like an outside vendor, like an IT service or somebody like that.
So, agree. And so, you know, some of my towns have people that's issues, which are huge, right? I've got other towns where schools are being sued because of what books they do or don't have in the curriculum and all that, you know, that, that's all the problem. But I'll tell you, I'm going to use your word liability a little differently, and my biggest concern, my biggest concern is that local government is, I mean, it is built and it relies on volunteers, right? You might call yourself volunteer, I, I call you unpaid public officials, but it's the same thing at the end of the day. And my concern is, um, there is an increasingly aggressive, um, tone that we see in our board meetings and it's not, it's, it's the audience to the board, it can be the board to the audience, it can be the board to the board. And I am, I'm, I would go so far as to say frightened that we're going to lose the volunteer nature of what we've built here for local government. I, I'm really concerned with this. I look around at my towns and you don't see very many contested races anymore. And I think that's, I think that's bad and I, and I don't, I don't know what to do about it, but I'm really concerned about it and I, I think it's everyone's job to work, to try to turn it around as best we can. But that's, it's in every town now.
It is, and we have taken some steps to try to address that with our, we worked in here when we started meeting, but with our diversity and that we statement to make sure that we do practice civility and we actually ask all of our committees, all of our committees, we have probably 30 plus of them, to read it as well to try to mitigate that. I can't, I mean, I think it's been somewhat helpful over the past year and a half, but yeah, certainly, yeah, I'm concerned.
You all seem like you've dealt with it beautifully, which is nice to see because...
Some days.
Some days. Were you hiding well or not?
Most days.
90%.
Yeah. That's, it's more and more rare and it's refreshing to see.
Before we go to one of the standards, Jim, I know you had a question, what do you want to address?
Yeah, the board asked a question about places where you see issues municipality. Big thing now is cyber, like, you know, the experience in that, how do you handle it? Or would you put that to an outside firm? We've had some issues, we have to reach out to one of our vendors, none of us, but we gotta do the notification, so. You run into that, how do you handle it, is your recommendation, something like that?
Yeah, I was gonna say, you, you dealt with notifications, yeah, times with communities who have those kind of problems. I mean, you know, depending on what happens, it may very well be something that needs to allow to outside vendor. We certainly work with vendors on things like that and other things, but when you get into technology, sometimes the knowledge base, we can, we can work on the legal part, but going beyond that, you know, we need to work with somebody else. But I think, I, I mean, each problem is a specific problem. And, you know, we generally try to counsel towns that, you know, you should be auditing yourself regularly when it comes to cyber. You should be auditing yourself as to your own internal practices, you should have disaster recovery, you should do the notifications so that you make sure that you don't have that liability. You know, and beyond that, you know, you just, you have to be wary because, I mean, frankly, there's always someone who's motivated to find what's going on, but, I mean, have you guys had issues specifically that?
If that was why we had to spend, it wasn't our data breach, but we still had to do notifications.
Yeah, yeah.
We do do internal audits, we do do training, everybody gets cyber training on a monthly or quarterly basis, Michelle?
That's good.
It's like forever.
Maybe 90 years, some clients, right?
That's good. No, that's, you're, you're appealing to my, gosh, it's a long time ago, my Oscar credit is an information system, so you're appealing my type me hard before I want to be a lawyer. But yeah, it is, you know, processes are probably the most important thing and unfortunately, it's not going to solve for every vendor who's out there or every, every situation that's going to happen, but it, it, it happens and, you know, the best thing to do is, it's not high for them when it happens, so to respond appropriately, you know. Oftentimes, you put out the notification, you deal with the issue and, you know, if you're not sleeping under the rug, at least you're not creating a bigger issue. But it is, it is reassuring to hear that you guys are on top of processes and documentation, just making sure that people are aware of the issues.
Well, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, I was just going to follow.
So, and I'm just going to add, so with one of my communities, so if, if you have the cyber insurance through your insurance company, I think one of the things that if they're, they're definitely recommending it and it's close to a requirement is two-factor authentication.
Required.
Right. So, and that's, that is not a cheap fix and it raises a lot of interesting, right? So you have it, but...
Everybody has.
Yeah.
Everybody has.
So you do.
And we do, yeah. Anyone that accesses, sends you an email.
And do you use Microsoft as your provider?
Yes.
Duo?
Microsoft.
Yeah, Microsoft.
Okay, because what we're seeing...
Duo's the authenticator.
What I'm seeing in, in other places is, so Microsoft, you know, they're kind of, they're forcing this two-factor authentication on everyone, which I like because I think it's really important, but it's also maybe not the license we all signed up for when we acquire Microsoft. And so, that's, it's a challenge, but it, so the challenge in other towns is if I need to, for Microsoft, you need to use the authenticator on the cell phone. And, you know, with, with other versions, you know, you can have them send you a text or an email or even a call to a phone, but Microsoft's very much going with the authenticator. And so then it becomes, do we have to supply cell phones to those employees who don't have it or don't want to put the authenticator on their phone? And it's just, it's another level of concern. And I think, I don't know what Microsoft is going to do, but I think there needs to be a workaround to that because the idea that we have to provide phones is not the answer, but we do need to have the two-factor.
As, as the Duo's just pops up, you have a call to a, a number.
Right.
The price difference for us, we have to pay more, it's a lot more, worse than nothing.
But worth it, yeah. Yeah, I like that, I like this, I like the idea that a call is the second one because we can get anyone to a phone.
Also have to be careful, I think, I mean, you know, it's good that you have the training and stuff, but as it becomes, you know, as you put another or another level on employees having to do something, just make sure that they're not sort of sneaking using their personal accounts or something like that to make it easier. I mean, it's a human thing sometimes, but, you know, if, if someone, it's late at night and they have to do something and they just see, you know, two-factor authentication, there's an extra layer to jump into something, be careful with them not shooting something to a personal account or something like that because that sort of circumvents security. It's like, you know, the process needs to train people otherwise, but...
And are you seeing any of your new associates coming in with, are you looking for any of that cyber expertise in their education when they come in? Have you seen that yet, new candidates?
Not really. We're, so, so I was just on a call yesterday with, with one of my clients, you know, talking about two-factor authentication, but I think we're seeing it more from the employee-employer relationship and less from the protection relationship.
Makes sense though.
You don't want us designing your system, that's for sure.
So I'm going to ask one of our standard questions. You, you gave us an overview of how you manage the count from a team approach and whatnot, but, so, we do want to better understand this, so I'm just going to read this. You know, will your firm assign one point of contact responsible for all town council inquiries? Have you, I think you have already identified that individual, which is you, right, Brian?
Yep.
Talk to us a little bit about that though, because, so Jim has an issue, he calls you, do you take it or do you pass it off to the expert on your team?
No, well, if he calls, you know, I'll always take it.
Well, I know you take a call, but do you take the, the matter, I guess, you know?
It, it depends on what the matter is. When I pass something off, I always ask that whoever's working on it sees, sees me because hopefully it was not to me in terms of service quality and responsiveness. But if it's like a procurement matter, would be a great example, we have a couple of infirm experts or something like that, you know, I'm going to pass it off to, you know, one of the other partners who does that. Again, I'm a very expensive game of telephone tag and if you're just running everything through me, that doesn't make any sense. You know, having the CCs on the emails so if somebody's out or can't give you a quick response or so that I can make sure that you're getting the response timing you need, that makes sense.
There you go.
Okay, well, I guess, well, I guess we're done.
We have to wave our hands, you know? We're Irish down here.
But you, you also, I mean, that's why you take a call, you, you also have the conversation about what's happening because again, you know, someone who's an expert in procurement or land use or whatever else it may be, you know, for a lot of, of issues, it may be a fairly standard, if it ever one, they can just run it, but there's other things that garner a lot more public interest, they may be a more complicated problem, they may intersect other departments, other things that are going on in the town. And that's very much my role in having the, the collaboration and the relationships of all of the town's employees and the town's elected officials to make sure that we navigate that appropriately. But, you know, I mean, a lot of this depends on the town too. I can tell you firmly from experience, every town works a little bit differently. And that's one of the first orders of business whenever we start working in towns is to figure out, you know, first off, how does the town administrator or town manager like to work? Because that's the most important point of contact. And then start building sort of an understanding of how the town generally works on those things. Call us, a lot of my clients, you know, they like to text me and just see, hey, are you available at this time, at that time? That way we don't play telephone tag or you don't get sort of a delay in answering email for a few hours, it's a really important issue, other clients, they just email, it's really sort of the pulse and the rhythm of the individual towns and working on it.
I just asked, so on this scenario you just painted, the term, I call you the termination issue. You said, okay, I gotta give this to Bob. But now you've called and talked to Bob. From a billing standpoint, am I paying you and Bob or am I paying you and then paying Bob? Understand the difference?
Yeah.
I really get kind of frustrated when paying attorneys to talk to each other.
No, I get that. I, I think that the call would be basically, hey, what's the issue is, you know, what's going on? You're like, oh, it's procurement, it's this, it's like, fine, I'll have whoever call you back. And at that point, no, you're not, you're not paying for me to be on the subsequent calls, you know? For us, it's Jenny, it's not Bob, but you know, if you're talking to Jenny...
Do you have a Bob?
Yeah. I don't think we have a Bob.
I don't think we do.
But, you know, I, I, I really, you know, one of the reasons we have only 13 attorneys, the 13 attorneys that we trust, it's, you know, the level of quality for each of them to sign it. So when I hand something off, you know, I hand it off. And at some point in the future, there's a value to me becoming involved again, but I will become involved again. But, you know, I will let that person run with it until, you know, there's some value to be, to be involved again. So, so you see me on the emails, you're probably not going to see me responding or typing in, you know, the attorney... you know, the attorney will know, or the town staff member will know, hey, there's sort of an issue here, we need to be calling back, you know? But, you know, we really try to be very sensitive to that sort of, you know, level of bill. And, you know, sometimes there's times where you, you try to avoid it and it just didn't work, and it's like, fine, I review the bills, write that time off, you know? There wasn't value there, so...
We're, we're really good at keeping contacts. I think that's one, one of our strengths is that we rarely deliver those clients. And one of the ways to do that is, we were, you know, we want to be paid for our work, but we don't want you on the other hand, on the other end complaining about your bills, because that's not, that's not how you retain a client. And so, a, as Brian said, we want to understand how you want to work, and we'll work that way. And everyone, and honestly, everyone's here. Some, some town administrators want to be in on everything, or they, or they want us in on everything, and other ones are just, okay, I'm gonna give you to Michelle, she'll run with it from here. And, and that's the switch. And so we want to, it's your call, we work for you, so we'll work for you the way you want us to work.
What's the average tenure of your client relationship? Thirteen towns.
So, Littleton is thirty-five years. Hopkinton, I think, came to us around ninety-seven.
Stockbridge is older, something like that.
Stockbridge is probably ninety-three or ninety-four.
So pretty long-term clients.
Yeah.
I just have one last standard question, which is, you know, looking at there, you asked about your experience in different areas of municipal law, you know, between the two of you, but also thinking about your staff, where do you consider your firms for your strength?
I would say, so I would say what we're built for is particularly land use. I think we have a really strong land use department. I think we're, we're particularly strong in litigation. I would say, I think our biggest strength or best friend, which I don't know if that is just in general government services, working the boards to get done what they want to get done. I think that's our, our best friend.
This is Vice Chair Goodrich.
Hology's.
Tom Darlington.
All right. We've all been stuck in that situation.
So open up to more free-form questions, we'll give you an interview. Start them in spring. Karen, did you have any additional?
One specific about the firm. So, you mentioning that, you know, you purposely having a good ratio between clients and the firm. So have you grown, oh, you, this is your firm, so have you grown as your clients have grown, or what's that look like?
So, we were, back in the day, there was three of us, and we had three towns, and so I wouldn't say kind of a direct line, you know, four towns, four employees, five towns, five employees. But we kind of seem, we seem to grow in threes, you know? Like you go from three to six, and then you hang at six for a while, and then you go from six to nine, and you hang at nine for a while, and you go from nine to twelve. And we are, we are quite frankly, probably on the verge of adding two employees, because we've been at twelve for a while now. I think we've been at twelve for about six years. What, kind of, one thing I've learned is growth never, like when you grow your firm, it's never, never works out quite, and I don't criticize that, but it never, like you think, I'm gonna bring in two employees, and they're gonna hit the ground running, and everything will be great. But it's not really that way, you know? It's, they are finding their feet, you're helping them to find their feet, and, or you bring in someone with a little more experience and there's adjustments. So, you know, you get to, it's like, right now, it's like, oh, I love this world, this is a good world. And then we're gonna grow again a little bit, maybe, and so, but then we're gonna change it, and, you know, change is, I like the way, I'm always, I like the way it is, but it's time and it'll be good, but I, I don't think that's a good answer to your question.
No, but it's, the follow-up question is obvious, is, of the folks in the firm, what's your turnover like? Do you keep your ten, like...
Oh, yeah.
How's your retention?
I don't think Chris and Jenny, or both partners, have ever worked anywhere else.
I haven't worked anywhere else. Yeah. Yeah, so I would say, since two thousand, I would say four attorneys have left.
Sometimes I would say, too, that if they leave or they leave, you know, one, you know, at least went to D and P, which is, you know, not a competitor, it's like, gosh, it's a different opportunity. It's not as if the firm is, you know, sort of trying to help.
She didn't like billing. See that?
Great.
And it's not a fun part of the job.
Karen?
Yeah, do you have any experience in crisis management? It sounds like the Bourne situation had the potential to be, and my experience with attorneys in crisis management is they almost always, they don't say anything.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's not good advice.
Thank you.
I mean, you know, oftentimes it's...
Attorneys like to be cautious, which I understand, but it's not helpful if you're not managing issues that are of public interest.
Well, you need to think about the way you communicate, for sure. And in attorneys, you know, we are always concerned that we're gonna make a statement that is gonna open you up to liability. We're, we're frankly in a current environment, a statement that just doesn't play well on a new cycle, and that, that can be really difficult. Sometimes I tell people, look, I haven't yet seen anyone win the new cycle, we're just trying to minimize the fallout here. But I have dealt with some police issues in other communities. And one thing that, you know, I've, we've done is, you know, you can't do something like that, you need to figure out how to be transparent, and how to be able to, I mean, I've actually worked with an outside communication consultant on that. We, you know, we worked with, bringing them on board, and crafting the message, you know? Again, it all goes back to what I've said a lot of, which is collaboration, teamwork, you know? Legal is part of that team. You certainly need to think about, you know, with those issues, is there a statute that prevents you from saying something? Or is there a legal reason where you might be open to liability for saying something? But at the same time, you, you know, the lawyers aren't the expert in how you say what you need to say to minimize the fallout, and so you go find somebody who the attorney can work with to do that, because, you know, maybe the don't say anything attorney approach worked like twenty years ago, when there wasn't Facebook, or all the online news outlets, or YouTube. In my experience in dealing with crisis situations, that does not, does not work anymore anymore.
And I would, so, you know, so having done this a long time, horrific things have happened to our minds, suicides, horrific things. So we've all been in this situation. And from my perspective, it's really, it's rarely a, it's rarely a serious legal issue. I mean, some of it's, that is, they're gonna happen legally, but when I look at the town and I want to protect the town, you know, it's like, okay, I protect the town's reputation and a liability issue. I don't want, I don't want the town, you know, to have to come up with twenty million dollars or something like that. In all those situations, or in most of those situations, that's rarely the case. Like, I rarely look at it, you know, because it's kind of, as the lawyer, the first thing you do is go, okay, what's our liability? It's rarely, right, it's rarely a liability issue. And so that way, it's like, okay, we're not trying to protect us from having to pay a hundred million dollar judgment out of our own pocket, so let's move past that. It's, you know, the liability issue is usually pretty small, and we have insurance, so after that, it's our reputation and how do we act responsibly? And so it's, you have to have the first conversation, it's what we went to school for, it's what we do, and you'll blame us if we don't do it, and rightly so, but we can move on from that pretty quickly, especially to, okay, we're human, we have a reputation, we're a town, we're an employer, we're all these things, how do we, you know, how do we do what's right?
Andrew?
I'm asking still.
Okay. Think of something fast. Susan?
I'm, I'm looking through some more, if any, you know, if the two of you have something, tell them I go ahead.
I actually do, to follow up, so, now, it's not a crisis, but we have an issue. And public relations needs to be a part of it. So, can you give me an example of where you've used communications and press, we'll just call it press media, as a way to, as a part of the legal strategy?
Absolutely. You know, great, too. You know, yeah, I did have a topic, you know, sort of had a police issue with a teenager, suicide, and dealing with that, it was tough, and I guess that was a crisis, but, you know, so we dealt with the crisis, which I just talked about. As often the case, you know, no one thinks about having a communications consultant until they have the crisis, and they, so they, they bring him in. But sort of moving on from that, you know, part of what we actually deal with in terms of dealing with future issues is, is like, let's keep the communication consultant on, because, you know, we always think of them as like, you know, they're crisis consultants or something, but they do a lot more than that. And, you know, particularly with police departments, you know, all the bad goes up quickly to the top of the feeds, but they do a lot of good things, too. And so part of the approach with that is, is, you know, you keep them on, because, you know, the police are good at being police, they're not good at communicating, you know, sort of all the little things that go on in a degree about the department. And once you start, you know, having someone help them do that on a regular basis, help them build maybe a more transparent website that gets news out, and, you know, probably not the vernacular, the internet makes it sticky, so that it appears in search results or stays in the feeds and stuff. When the next crisis comes, or even the next little issue, when people are like, oh my goodness, and they go to Google, or, you know, search for whatever, you know, it's not only that issue that pops up as like the first ten results, you're actually getting more balanced view of what's going on. So that, that was specific to police, but frankly, I think in this day and age, we see a lot of these issues coming up with police, but it really applies to anything in town does, whether it's a potential zoning issue or whatever else. You know, putting your narrative out there ahead of the issues, I think, goes a long way, and not the narrative long issue, just the narrative of what we're doing goes a long way to managing the issues or the crises when they come up, because you're building that trust and that accountability, not in that specific moment, but before here. And it, you know, I, I think we've seen some positive results in the towns that I'm working with.
And I would say that, so that conversation is not unusual, because honestly, when, when this happens, and we're sitting with you, your question for us is probably not going to be, what's our liability? Is this gonna be covered by insurance? You're, you're, you're jumping to...
That's Jim's question.
That's Jim's question, yeah. He'll be the one hitting us with the bankroll. Your question is, how do we communicate this to the public? So we're, we're in these conversations all the time, and as you can hear, you know, we do think communications consultants can add value, right? We're not, we can help craft a message, but, you know, it's what they do, so I think it's, we want you to, we want to be part of the team that gets you there, but we might not be the whole team in that situation. And I can tell you, you know, when I started out, there was always a local reporter at every meeting, and, you know, you always made friends with them, and they used to send me the stuff before they published it, because they wanted to get the law right, and I wanted to get the law right. And, you know, I didn't want to sound like an idiot when I, you know, because they'd ask for a quote, and then you'd go, can I see that? Because, and they, you know, so that, that, but that relationship is gone. So it's, it's now different, how you manage it. And I kind of keep circling back to, you know, if we, if we kind of, if we're thoughtful about it, you know, and we just kind of do what we know is right, it almost always works out. And we'll make sure you don't put the town in danger when you're doing that, but once we remove the danger of it, it's, it's not always that complicated a question, just look at it for that one.
I do say, I'm sorry to answer this earlier, I missed, I missed this. I don't think it described any work done with federal regulations, maritime law, coastal issues, things like fishing regulations, or if we're doing dredging or things that are out, that we've had, you know, a lot of different permitting issues and other things that may help us navigate, to make sure that we're, we're following, so, speak to that.
Yeah. So we've already dealt with a little, so we're, we're fairly new in the town form, but they're obviously a coastal community, and so we have done some work with that, you know, both federal, you know, state, you know, there's a new regulatory framework rolling out, we're tied to five. I know that some of our attorneys have worked on some maritime contracts. We actually have a yacht that's sitting in the harbor that was in foreclosure, bankruptcy that we had to deal with. And so we are increasingly seeing some of those issues come up. My background, again, is administrative in constitutional law of the state, so to the extent we run into a complex regulatory scheme, I was sort of my bread and butter for five years in the office of the Attorney General. You know, these are certainly things that, you know, we can work with and sort of help you with. But it just depends on the issue, too. I mean, and as I said earlier, I can guarantee you at the state level, and I know it's equally true at the federal level, that the bureaucracy is not contracting, it is expanding. So, every day, it feels like there's sort of a new issue, or a new permit, or a new thing you have to deal with, you have to go out there with the army corp for dredging or whatever else, that kind of permit on top of every other permit that you may need to get. And so it gets complex, and, you know, unfortunately, that makes these projects all unique in their own little special ways, and you really do need to assemble the right team, not just law, but, you know, in terms of town staff and everybody else, and coordinate that. And, you know, sort of the other piece of that is, is that no matter what the regulations may say, I guarantee you that the regulatory body has their own spin or interpretation on how the process is supposed to work. So I always counsel early and quick engagement with whoever the regulatory authority is, because a lot of times you can save yourself a lot of billable hours down the road if you just pick up the phone and go find the counsel, you know, whoever it is, whether it's at the state level or the federal level, like, hey, we're, hey, look, how does this work? What makes your life easier, so that we can give it to you the way that you want it, or go about the process that you want it? Because if we make their life easier, they'll make our lives easier, and on the legal end a lot less expensive.
So, from my perspective, so one of the things that we do, one of our training methods is to have our associates join a board in their town, because it's important to sit on that side of the desk, to know what it's like. And so I was on the console of my town for five years, and, you know, at Big M E C C, I was over at M E C C. I argue to know where weapons places, I've been representing conservation commissions for a long time, so, from what you said, so, and we have others in the firm who are quite adept at weapons regulations, coastal zone management, check of ninety-one, we've done all that. We haven't done any maritime law.
We might have to get a special counsel.
Yeah, but as far as that goes, I was in the merchant rings, which I have a big chance to do that, and I wasn't doing all of them.
Nancy, did you have anything?
I was just curious, you had mentioned about managing the legal expenses. What is your billing cycle like? When should we expect the bills, what week do we do it? Is it thirty days out, sixty days out, ninety days out?
So we bill monthly, and everyone, you know, should get their time in a couple weeks, and then a week, a month is the firm policy, and the partners go through to get it out that month, so we really expect maybe, you know, sometime within the next thirty days to get you the bill.
So, yeah, so your September bill you'd get?
In October.
In October, yeah.
And I notice, John, you're from a schedule of five years of billable expenses, you had one town that's on retainer, are you expecting towns to be on retainer, or was that just something special for that one town?
Yeah, that's a, just a, a best leadership, and a longstanding relationship.
One of the clients we identified earlier is one of the long-term clients, and, you know, we, I think that one works, just because we have such a longstanding feel for the town that we can sort of calibrate it, so it really sort of lines up with what the billable hours would be anyway, you know?
So you don't require a retainer?
No.
We do, our town planner, Karen, did you have any questions? Tell them on to you.
Just a quick question, on what do you think is adequate response time? If I come, if I have a nasty attorney letter that I send you, am I gonna get a response within twenty-four hours? Or what, how long is a response time?
It depends on the issue, but I think twenty-four hours is sort of the standard that we need, but, you know, if this person's called you three times that day, obviously say, well, you know, shoot me a text, and let's talk about it that day. You know, a lot of times... let's talk about it that day. Um, you know, a lot of times we get busy, and so if you call the number, then you have the voicemail, we'll get back to you within twenty-four hours. If you want us to, it's like, if, if I didn't pick up, just shimmy a text like, hey Brian, I've got an issue, when can we talk?
Okay.
I would add, so the critical information is when do you need the answer?
Yeah.
Right? So if you get the, if, if you get the letter four hours before hearing, call us and text us to make sure, you know, it's, it's, we will, we will take that, but we need to understand that that's what we are interested in.
If I'm not available, we'll find somebody.
Thank you.
I have another question for you. Could you define the travel rate in how you, you know, coming from Wellesley, does that kick in? Do they leave the office to head our way, or?
It does.
Define that?
Any additional? No, thank you. Jim, anything additional?
Nope.
Well, we thank you very much for coming this way. It was a pleasure meeting you, and obviously you're highly qualified and it's great to meet you. We'll be in touch. You know, we're not going to vote this evening. So don't stick around. You should really beat the traffic now.
I think they should probably have a lot, or maybe have somebody traffic.
I do want to contribute to the, to the town.
You could use a little space, but.
By all means, please enjoy our wonderful restaurant. Please, thank you.
We appreciate the time. You know, it is, town council is an important decision. So, you know, genuinely, I hope we thoroughly vet everybody and make the right decision. If it's not us, it's not us. We wish you the best, but we do hope it's us, but whatever direction you go is not a question.
We appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
The tubid where your scarlet was planted. Didn't know I was permissioned.
Were you just asking? Yeah.
No, I didn't say that.
This, this may not be all right. You guys are looking pretty tough.
But the next boot, uh?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I would admit it just to say around my eyes, once again. Thank you very much.
Oh, you're taking it, thanks.
Doctor says, your failure to plant that is not my problem. We had your water, that's it.
Hi, I'm Jamie.
Hi, Jamie.
Hi, I'm Jamie.
She's here.
Nice to meet you guys. Good to see you.
Sorry.
See you.
You're good.
Hi, this is Paris.
Sure, whatever you want. So welcome.
Thank you.
Already did introductions, so thank you for that. Um, just as far as the format that we put together for this evening, we've put together five standard questions that we're asking every firm. Um, and then in opening up, obviously, the follow-ups, allowing staff to ask some questions as well, um, and then also just pre-formal questions as well. So, um, first though, we'd love for you to give an overview of your firm. I know you're familiar with several of you, um, in many different capacities, but just for the record, I mean, some new members as well on the board. Um, ten minutes, fifteen minutes, wherever you'd like to take the overview, and share with us also why you submitted a response to take on this role.
Great. Thank you. Just to introduce ourselves for the recording, my name's John Clifford, my partner Jamie Kenny Clifford Kenny, lot of galvan. We all make the long ride here from Marshfield. We all live in Marshfield, very local. Um, we are both south shore firms. Our office is in Pembroke, ours is in Foxbury. Um, one of the pluses is virtually no travel time built whenever we're in situ where we work. The proposal admittedly is a little bit creative, a little bit different, but we think it works in situat for a number of reasons. I was a town administrator for thirteen years before going into private practice in two thousand and seven. In two thousand and thirteen, Jamie, who was a union attorney who I had interactions with, with lead by, Jamie and I had met, we had a real shared interest. We went into partnership in two thousand and thirteen. Since two thousand and thirteen, we've grown the firm. We represent over twenty-five different cities and towns in different capacities, almost all of them, has labor council. We have two that we represent in general council, Lockland and this Bridgewater. We have some really shared principles, Jamie and I, and one of the reasons we went into partnership is because we really have a shared vision of how municipal firms should certainly acquire. We want responsiveness. You, we are always reachable by email and cell phone. Cities and towns are a twenty-four-seven business. Um, we've been labor council here since two thousand and fifteen. Calls on weekends, nights are part of our business, because it's part of your business. One of the things that Jamie and I also shared is that our interactions with attorneys over the years, what we grew really dislike, were vague answers, indecisive responses, just when you call an attorney and the attorney says, well, this is the law, you could do this, you could do that. We don't believe in that. We believe in talking to the client, assessing the situation, and coming up with a really hard and fast game plan you could follow, including drafted documents, notices, to try to make it easy. But we really want the client to believe that we have a plan, we've dealt with the situation before. And I think you've seen that philosophy in action here in situat. We only represent two towns as town council, East Bridgewater and Rockland. We've had the opportunity to bid the town council in a number of places, we declined the opportunity to do so. We were always mindful about growing too fast. All of our labor and employment clients, the work comes in pretty steadily over the course of the year. When you're town council, the work reaches a percentile in January, February, March, and April. Your town meeting, that's when there's a lot of work at town council. And we were always mindful of being overwhelmed at that time. One of the real reasons that we chose to put in a proposal here, in addition to the fact that we know you folks, the other reason is your town meeting is the second Monday meeting. The other town meetings that we cover are the first two weeks and then. One of the things that I learned when I went into practice is at your town meeting, you want town council, you want the same person. One of our biggest clients, we got that client because they were represented by a larger firm, and at their annual town meeting, the firm sent somebody down who made it for them. I will be at your town meeting. I'm at every town meeting in Rockland, I'm at every town meeting in East Bridgewater. For purposes of town meeting, I want to get to know the moderator, actually, no Mr. Toomey, who, 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 years. I want to know how your town meeting works. One of the things that a lot of people don't recognize about town meeting is pretty much a custom. It's not really structured that closely by law. So your town council needs to be part of the custom, needs to understand how it works, who the players are, and that's one of the things that we're going by. We've been labor council here for eight years. I think one of the things that our track record speaks to really well is the fact that we get back to people, we try to minimize litigation, and I think we've had a successful run. The reason that we wanted to partner with lot gal is because we have this identical structure in the town of Rockland. We are town council in Rockland, have been since two thousand and eight. They needed land, land, uh, land use and planning and zoning work. Um, I recommended Bob, Bob interviewed for the job, Bob is land use council in Rockland. One of the things that I think is really special about the relationship of our two firms is we collaborate on everything. It's not competitive. We don't argue over whose case is, is which. If you do this work with any kind of frequency or over the course of any period of time, you will find times when you will confront one as a conflict, kind of meeting as an actual legal conflict. Our firm, Bob's firm, will switch off all the time. So, it's, I think it's a situation that we really encourage you to speak with the folks in Rockland. They've been very happy with this arrangement. It's not confusing to them. People know who to call for whatever particular issue is. And they also know that for whatever reason, if Bob were tied up, if I were tied up, they can call someone else.
Yeah, I think the only other thing that we didn't touch on before is that we really have a focus on training to try to be of service to you and make you the best municipal leaders that we can be. We work, I, I think we actually have forty-two different towns that we work in, in total, for special council projects, and then we have our regular labor council, um, clients as well. And one of the things that sets us apart is really, we drive to create the best municipal leaders that we can create. And that's really focusing on how to understand everybody's goals in the process, because everybody has a role, and how to understand what that role is, so where you can really advocate and really where you can understand things. We're here to be of service to educate you so that you all can be the best advocates that you can be. That's what we want. We want civic advocacy. We want to educate. We want to be of service, not only you, but your boards and your committees and this town. In the same way that we've done as labor council, um, we do it even more in those towns where we're town council, because we really take on those other boards and committees. And we really try to work with those other boards and committees through open meeting law training, through just regular best practices training, through, um, really trying to coach folks and develop leaders, because really that's what we should be doing. We should be of service to you all so that you all can do your jobs the best you can. And that includes really clear advice, and also one of the things that we focus on is communications in terms of talking points, so that when somebody comes up to you at the Delhi line, or at Monkey Fin, or I Love, or wherever it is, you know and understand, okay, here are the three things that I can tell any Joe average citizen on this issue. And that's our job to be able to tell you what those key three or four items are, to direct them back to the appropriate process. And they're not usually coming to you because they're saying, great job, right? No one ever calls town hall and is like, you know, you guys are doing a great job. Usually there's an issue. So it's how to redirect their frustration to a constructive way to help benefit the town and help benefit you all. Our job is to be of service to you. Our job is to protect you. Our job is to show you where the legal liability is. And our job is to really make sure that we're maintaining that legal budget by driving down those litigation costs. And if you see what we've done here with labor, you know, we don't generally litigate. We try to resolve issues, and we try to give the best advice we can give to avoid litigation and to avoid liability, because that is what's going to be a budget buster for any city or town. And I would just say that that really sets us apart from any other, um, council. And we work with lots of other councils in other places I would imagine as labor council. Bob is simply the best of the best, and I'll say it, when it comes to land use and zoning, and I, I really, he'll speak for himself, but, um, any issue that I've ever had and I've been confused about with land use or zoning, I mean, he is, he's the person that you want to speak to. And I think the fact that we are a south shore firm, we love the south shore. I live in North Marshfield, it's almost situat. But we love the south shore, you know, we, um, we're a local firm, and we are in the communities, and we understand a lot of the issues. We have a lot of coastal towns that we also represent, so we understand that as a coastal town, you have specific needs, and as a coastal town of south shore, you have specific needs. And we understand those needs because we live in this community. And, you know, we'll take any questions, but I think I like to be the one.
So, uh, I have a lot of the shared philosophies, as John and Jamie, uh, you know, my firm is truly a small firm. I'm probably one of the last few general practitioners of municipal law that are still basically working by themselves, although I do have my, um, what I value most about being a town council and working in a small firm is the relationships they have with the clients. Uh, there's no one else to call, to call me. Uh, and I can't tell you, I think I've taken over in five other locations where a municipality or a municipal agency is not satisfied with the relationships they have with their prior council, including in, in Rockland. And I'll never forget, I went to the meeting, we are interviewing the chairman of the voice line, and said, I don't even know who you are, I've never met you before, we've been there council for years. Um, I have, I really do have a direct, what, on, right, relationship, and I get to know all the slot men, I get to know the members of the zoning board of appeals, the planning board, the conservation commissions, the board of health. I just happen to believe one of my strengths in municipal law happens in land use and planning, and I live in a lot of cases in those areas. And, um, I mean, I, it is deeply involved in some of the labor issues as John and Jamie are, but, um, as I said, I'm a general practitioner. And, um, just for a punishment, I represent the Sid Everett School Committee, and if you open the call one any given week, you'll see something involving labor in every school committee. Um, but, uh-
Say that one.
Yeah. Uh, so, uh, I am town council in three communities, Marshfield, Noel, and Stone. I'm land use council with, you know, basically, uh, together with council for Rockland. Again, I represent the planning board of the zoning board of appeals, the board of health, and the conservation commission. And like John and Jamie have said, uh, we just have never had any issues with getting the job done. It just gets done. And everybody always knows who's to call when they call me, and they certainly know to call John and Jamie. And I too was paying attention to the calendar every year because, uh, almost inevitably there are some changes on a town meeting venue, and, uh, Stone and Noel, Rockland are in May, um, and Marshall is at the end of April in situat, so it's a convenient time for me also. I've never had the luxury of enjoying an April vacation, because it's, it's town meeting season. Uh, town meeting season really is a little bit getting the air for us right through the end of May. During COVID, it was through the end of July in some communities. But, uh, I have a small firm mentality. Um, I love taking on the big guys, uh, have no problem litigating complex cases, do it by myself, carry my own files when everybody walks in with paralegals, and don't think anything that I'm doing. So, there isn't a task that's too big for me. My philosophy, I guess, has always been this out of work. And, um, I love to work. I work usually four full days and four full nights in a week, and like John and Jamie, because you're a town council, things happen over the weekend, and inevitably we're dealing with those types of issues. Although I might not have those types of issues in situat, and those would probably go principally to John and Jamie, um, uh, those weeknights are dedicated to the volunteers and elected officials on your planning, zoning boards, and Thursday night for the planning, for the zoning board of appeals is a perfect night for me. Um, it's one of the few nights that I really don't have a break or leave planned on that. Uh, the other thing I think that's different about me than most is that general background. Uh, if you look at my resume, I've got some eclectic legal experience. Uh, I represent junior airport commissions. I represent the Southfield redevelopment authority, which is a former cable gas station in South Plymouth, which is of all fun. Um, as we try to negotiate, um, the future of, of that entity. And, uh, I represent the Plymouth Growth and Development Corporation, which is a re, basically a redevelopment authority. In the town of Plymouth, it's become a parking authority, uh, and that's actually been really successful. The town of, in the town of Plymouth, they used to generate only a hundred thousand dollars of net income from parking revenue when they had it administered by the police department with, you know, with meter assistance. Uh, they created a whole park, parking infrastructure, and they now generated millions of dollars in income, which was desperately needed in the waterfront to go over the area. Um, and it doesn't feel punitive at all to most people when you're paying a dollar for a couple of hours, like a dollar per car for all the spaces that they lease, and wire generates millions of dollars for, for Plymouth. So, um, again, I, I actually have done special council work, and I haven't been too busy recently. I was special council in Pembroke, um, for the water department. I represented the South Sack of all water district, and my job was to deal with contaminated portable water wells. We ended up not having any solution for contamination by MTBEs, that was the gasoline additive, and we ended up merging our district, and my job was to eliminate the heat of up, uh, and we merged with board. So, had a lot of legislative experience in connection with that. Um, it's not- It's not unusual for me to prepare special legislation due to the state legislators on a whole bunch of topics. This year in Rockland, we did it for cemeteries. Rockland never had a municipal cemetery until this year, but two were abandoned. And we had to create cemetery commissioners and we're creating an investigation for that. Last thing I'll tell you is Situate is, although I probably have seen you most in connection with the shellfish related issues, Situate has been a place that I've been coming to for years. I grew up working at Pier Forty-four in Situate. And always enjoyed my time there. I like to play golf in any free time that I have and have many friends up in Halloway and enjoy any time I get invited to play there. Golf is one of the few things that I do with my free time. And I do it with my sons who seem to enjoy it as well. But my philosophy is I love the dynamics of a small firm. I love being asked to handle it all beginning to end. I've done, and this probably also makes me a little bit unusual, I've tried, done appeals in about twenty-two cases in appeals court and I've argued at the S J C sometimes, including us back on municipal additional powers issued all the time around. So I know, I think almost everybody in the room may be not the chief, but I work in some capacity with everybody here. And I've appeared in front of all of your land use boards. I saw Karen Cantwell at the opening of the Drew facility. I was the permitting attorney for that. And I appreciate all the education I got from Karen. And that Karen for, you know, the new zoning that took place there. And that was quite a project and I think it's turned out quite nice. But I was the good, at, at the very end, we had a building that was a little bit high and we had to come up with a solution and we figured out a solution using the North River Commission solution. That was to increase the elevation of the area around the buildings. So I think I know a lot of the intricacies of the bylaws or something experienced like that. And, but I never did so much that I was in a litigating position against the town of Situate. I was always able to work it out on overwriting. I would love to work on your side because that's where I do most of my work as opposed to the less often working in front of the boards. Plenty of attorneys here that practice in front of those land use boards. I know them all very well. I think we all have a healthy, respectful one another, even I might disagree with them, but that's our philosophy.
Excellent. Thank you. So we did put together, as I said at the onset, five standard questions. John had already answered one of them, so we'll skip over question four. So Karen Conley, do you want to start?
Um, could you just give me?
Yeah, sure. Susan, you want to start?
Anyone's a natural.
Okay.
Come on, people. It's a different question.
I know. What do you think is the biggest legal risk for municipalities today?
Right, I can't remember. The biggest single risk we, we're, we're facing the most invisible quarters, particularly facing most difficulty, major employment litigation, harassment, discrimination, that kind of thing. Those types of cases can drag on for years. In many cases, they'll begin by nature, but they're incredibly destructive. They can be costly in terms of judgment, which is why we need to spend a lot of time on training, teaching people to avoid it. One of the things we tell reporters all the time is that you can't guarantee an harassment and discrimination pretty workplace. What you can do is you can react to what happens. You can be aware and know how to spot it and then how to deal with it. A lot of the other litigation, well, I can speak to this, Linds litigation is probably the biggest piece of the legal budget. It's not particularly high risk, but it does threaten to leave a bunch. Those cases tend to drag on.
Yeah, and you know, kind of, just kind of, as a, as a side of how we complement one another, I would tell you that the biggest risk that you have is probably the risk associated with lack of change. Sea walls, sea walls is something Marshfield's been through. Marshfield was almost really kind of a leader with sea walls, even though the people in North Marshfield never directly benefited by the sea walls that were constructed for about, about ten million dollars in the brant rock field in an ocean loafer area. We were able to build consensus in town that it was a town of Marshfield problem and we asked everyone to come up with a solution. We got grant money to the extent we could and then we borrowed the money at low cost and we fixed five miles of sea walls. At, as you know, at extraordinary expense that goes up every year. And, you know, I'm aware of what's going on with the sea walls, what happened at the recent town meeting with sea walls and some of your philosophies that I'm familiar with regarding, I mean, you fix that area. So, you know, brant rock in Marshfield is a lot like a lot of areas in Situate. It's low lying, it's, you know, it's subject to flooding, even in a flood tide. And coastal resiliency is something that I think creates a huge attention problem for the towns in our lifetimes. The storms seem to be always stronger than they ever were. The flood zones are larger every year. The cost to a homeowner of rebuilding their structure and ensuring it increases, the fund guarantees to two hundred fifty thousand dollars. We've, we've seen homes in Marshfield knocked down by the waves, down the brant rock, people getting two hundred fifty thousand dollars because that's all the insurance they had and unable to rebuild what they even had. And, you know, Situate I think had it before anybody else on a big issue. But I think those issues because the property values, so much more is, is a myriad of consequences. So, so much of an impact in the next ten years. Marshfield, Duxbury, and Situate, I think I've been trying to forecast exactly what's going to happen and when. I know it's not an exact science, but it seems to be almost certain with the impacts that we see in coastal communities. And we're going to have to be dealing with it and we're going to have to figure out how to pay and stay or how to retreat. And that'll probably be what the market will bear. How much will people be willing to lose before they don't rebuild? And fortunately, there's a lot of value in coastal properties and town of Marshfield, town of Situate, town of Duxbury or any other coastal communities where to lose a significant segment of the town, that's going to have a huge damage impact on the town.
So as a follow-up, how do your services help us mitigate that? Like, I've been all pretty well aware of all the risks that what's going to happen, but where do you come in?
Where do I come in?
Yeah.
Well, I've been, so right now, Marshfield and Duxbury are preparing to do a beach nourishment program. And my role on that has been to prepare easements where easements would need to be taken, to review the contracts with the Wood Soul group who's our consultant for.
Okay, so more like just be.
And Situate's consulting, correct. And, you know, we're fortunate, we have some pretty good volunteers that are familiar with flooding and our planner and your planner are really pretty darn good about this. Marshfield's very aggressive with flood plain management. It drives every homeowner nuts when they now realize that in addition to getting special perimeter barriers, they're going to get a flood permit from the building commissioner. No one's happy about spending another four or five thousand dollars to put an addition on their house. But unfortunately, those things have to be evaluated because it affects the community's flood rating. The building inspector I know, we talk daily, how flood plain management and how it affects people and how we can try to alleviate some of the issues for average homeowners. And that's where I come in.
Thank you. A follow-up on that, how long do you take? I assume that the Marshfield sea wall that got rebuilt was rebuilt as a result of the storm that happened about five years ago, maybe?
Our, our sea walls have been crumbling for a long, long.
Well, ours are too, as you well know.
Right. Oh, yeah.
I, I guess my question is, it seems as though we keep hearing that it's going to take years to get permitting and everything. And my question is, when, when there's a catastrophic event, is the permitting process quicker? Does the state, I mean, because it seems like that sea wall in Marshfield built pretty quickly.
We did a lot of sea walls for about five consecutive years. And it may not have all been, it may not all been in one piece. We definitely did it in chunks. We borrowed money representative, it was then representative Cantwell who began getting us the funding for some of the sea walls and I'm glad we got out ahead of it. And the way Marshfield views sea walls and the way Duxbury views sea walls are very different. So in Marshfield, it was a community sea wall. In a Duxbury, every resident down on the sea walls in Duxbury has to pay a veteran assessment. And it's, they're not all together. They're, it's individual assessment to the homeowner. So it's a very different philosophy in Marshfield. You know, I like the collegiality of the town. I mean, we have half the town in Marshfield that's not sewer. But yet, half, that other half of the town that's not sewer pays for the improvements of the sewer facility. And we're constantly upgrading that and I'm sure that's something that's happening in Situate happens and every community's happening in Rockland. Rockland's facing the replacement of its plan. So again, half of Marshfield's sewer happened and it's going to be very similar in Situate. All parts of the town have no water and sewer. But yet, all parts of the town are paying for that because indirectly it benefits everybody because the schools are on sewer, the restaurants are on sewer, the business community is on sewer. So it's a community thing and that's how we pay for it.
Thank you.
Yeah, can you provide a recent example of when your team demonstrated a high level of responsiveness to a client? Can I explain?
Yeah, I think if you'll notice.
I feel like this is like every, within fifteen minutes, it'll be happening again.
In my purpose, I put my cell phone in because I expect you all to have my cell phone number if you recall. And I think you are going to have some issues that are even more, more urgent than the need you may have with me if I'm handling the land use matters. And you'll need to have theirs too. But in the event that they weren't available, I am, or in the event that advisors.
I can, I can give a more concrete example. The town of Rockland has a likely sewer commission. They have a plant and infrastructure that's fifty, sixty years old without having done much investment.
I know, we're downstream.
We know.
We're downstream.
They get the pollution.
We get the shellfish. We're downstream.
There are, there's a lot of, aside from my, my.
He was crying.
But there's a lot of general council work, working with the commission, trying to get them on track or under the E P A, administrative consent order with them, trying to make sure that they're complying with it. There are special challenges dealing with elected boards sometimes. We've had to deal with that. Lot has come into it and we've had to work collaboratively because they've imposed a moratorium on development that has very real impacts on some important projects. So we try to work together. There's a lot of coaching. It's a lot of basic management guidance kind of thing to get things moving in the right direction. There's a lot of work, and this is where my background is, the administrator comes in. There's a lot of work with them trying to make them understand how finances work, that kind of thing. So that's probably, that's ongoing. We work together because it flows into land use and it really is important that we work together to try to get to a manageable solution there.
But I'll just say, like, everybody has our cell phones. So if you, we've been, we've been Labor Council here for eight years. I mean, you can ask the chief and ask Jim. I mean, they all have our cell phones. They all, if it's, if it's your turn, I would say, everyone gets a turn. Like, every town gets a turn where, like, it will be triaged. And we always say this, like, if somebody bleeding from the head, that's the triage or go to the top list. And if you have a situation where you need immediate plan of action, you will get the whole team. And we have, I think it's twelve voters collectively. And there are some times in our firm where you get the whole team and there's literally, like, we all drop everything to make sure that we're pushing our cross for these and we have talking points for select board members and we have a whole communication plan for people on some of these issues. And I think that's the thing that we really try to do is again, help you all manage those situations where we have, you know, we have something that's, that's urgent and that gives potential liability. So I would encourage you to talk to other folks that have us, especially Eastford Water in Rockland. And Rockland, we have the exact same structure in terms of who does what. So we all work in many towns together, but Rockland would be the same, the same app as Situate would have. And I would ask, I would encourage you to talk to any of the select board members there because I think over time, we also onboard select board members in a really unique way. Every time we get a new select board member in one of the towns or a town council, we set aside like three or four hours and bring them to our office to do one-to-one training with them so that they can really understand their role and really understand the form of government. And every town has its own practices, so to speak. So sometimes it's not something that you're going to be able to hoop because in the town of Situate, the practice flows because of the custom. And you're going to have to understand that in Situate might be a little different because your charter might be a little bit different than, you know, Marshfield, Duxbury, Co-Hass and Foxborough, any of these other towns that we work in. And really trying to have that training upfront, that's, I think it's huge because then you all have, we've heard this feedback from other select board members, and we've actually asked to train other select boards in other towns who are in our even town council because our select board members like that, almost who can't settle training with us right at the beginning of their term so they can really understand their role. Because it's a lot being thrown at you as elected official when you first onboard and you first come onto work. And I'm sure you all, when you were first elected, that was a bit overwhelming because it's, it's not straightforward. Municipal law is not straightforward. What you won't do is not straightforward. So we're here to help guide you with all the experience that we have collectively and, and again, help make you the best we can be while protecting you from liability.
I just, I just want to add, for a concrete example, Rockland has two or three, it has an aging housing infrastructure. We have issues with tenants complaining, call the board of health, the inspection is done, the building needs to be done. All, all heck breaks loose with us when that happens. And it happens more often than you might think. We get a lot of people that are orders, they're, you know, squatting in buildings. There's been some terrible fires in Rockland that kind of takes it very seriously. We've had issue condemnation on our state tenants. So, you know, within a matter of hours, we're in buildings where there were real problems and it requires constant communication and immediate communication. It's all issues that are life and death, serious health safety, welfare issues. And some of the most recent stuff, and a good part of my dad came on the phone with health agent Charlie, she understands her responsibilities and what she can, what she can't do with his talents and documents and rights. That is increasingly more common now. And I'm happy to see the appointment of receivers more than I've had to do in the last couple years involving development properties that people have given care of that are being occupied by U L D and the law.
And I think we also try to be really strategic about issues in terms of how we approach them. Because I think one of the things that, again, made me want to go into this area of the law is that I really saw a reactivity from a lot of municipalities where it was just, it was reactive and it wasn't strategic and there wasn't a lot of planning and there wasn't a lot of training and there wasn't a lot of those things of the corporate environment and non-pro corporate environment really brings more in terms of how to train our leaders. And I think that's one of the other things that we look at, we look at it as an overall strategy instead of trying to put out like fires one by one. And I think that's the other thing that sets us apart in my experience.
Yep. Because you've answered some of the questions.
Okay.
Yes, all right. I think I'm going to turn this, one question around a little bit. It's obvious to me you have land use and planning experience and labor experience and you do work in other towns and town council. But my question would be, what, what about areas like contracts, procurement, you know, expertise in the, the things that can sometimes cause towns trouble? Do you have experts in that or would you?
We, this was where a lot of my background is from, this, right?
Oh, yes.
Basic, pure, you know, private state, municipal finance, all of those things. But contract review, one of the things that we've done in the firm is we do want all of our associates to be grounded in some very basic training. But within that, we have two or three associates that specialize in public records requests. We have two associates that specialize in contract review. We have two associates that are really into procurement. Jamie's husband is, is really great on the procurement side. So within the firm, we can delegate specific tasks and know that they'll get them done. But I've been in the business for thirty years, in the municipal business for thirty years, while I've been doing it about the same time, slightly, slightly different paths. But one of the things, if you're a general council, if you're a town administrator, you deal with that. You have to learn. You have to learn everything. And, and I've done things, cable contract negotiation. We've done, if you stay in this business long enough, you'll see everything. I thought I had seen everything, which was a recent case, but we've, we've seen everything, really have. So all of those general issues that come up, you know, we, obviously, we have specific experience in it. But I think being able to delegate it to associates in the firm who can really turn it around, I believe, that's really important.
And they hold the hands. Yeah, and they really hold the hands for the procurement at least. I mean, we have different folks in different towns who have different levels of, um, needs with procurement, right? So some people need a lot more handholding than other people. And we'll hold the hands if that's what they need because we know that ultimately it's protecting you from liability. Because you don't wanna have to have an issue with that and a rebid and all the things that go along with it. So, you know, we have, um, you know, where Tom Council, you know, there's a lot that goes into just, you know, call us, check with us, call us, check with us. We'll look at it, you'll look at it, we'll collaborate, we'll wanna make sure that you feel supported. Your staff feels supported with those procurement issues. And we have people in our firm that just specialize in that and will hold all the hands.
And how many so six, do you know?
Three, six.
We have seven now, we just have one past bar.
One past bar. He said that.
He's in the gray area. He's past four, yeah.
Six and a half.
The, uh, and, and this is where our flat fee proposal comes in because a lot of the questions, they're minor questions. You know, and, and you want people to pick up the phone and call us and choose to, you know, to answer the question without fear of seeing a quarter hour, et cetera, an hour, a bit, right? And, and we built relationships with department managers who will call with those simple questions before they make a mistake across your line. And that's really, that's the practical way towns run. If, if they say that it's gonna take a long time to get an answer, then I'm gonna be able to get in touch with somebody that they're not gonna call, really potentially making a mistake. The relationship we have with all of the department managers in our towns, I think, really takes a lot of those issues out. But, but we really have dealt with every single issue.
What we don't wanna do, this is the other thing that we've seen, right? Because it's, it's an operation and we've seen a lot of fear around department not feeling like they want someone to see on the bills, but they had to call us. Because there's like a pride issue sometimes or just something that they don't wanna have ever, you know, they don't wanna be, like, two point your five, point your five, point your five every time they have a question. And that's the other reason that we do it because we want them not to fear the call. Call us. It's not gonna pass a town, it's not gonna show up on the bill. We're gonna loop everybody in, we're gonna make sure you didn't answer. And that's really the other reason we do that is to get that fear out of any department heads', um, minds in terms of, ask the question. With no questions, dumb questions, wanted to ask the question. That's what we're here for.
And just to complement John and Jamie, I expected to be dealing principally with none of those issues. But for thirty years, I've been involved in all aspects of procurement, whether it's land acquisition with the services, things like that, and, you know, I mean, did protests. I know you like golf courses, golf course disputes. I was involved as special counsel, years and years ago in the strawberry, about golf course commission. And to deal with a bid dispute involving Johnson Golf Management. I got involved, uh, about ten years ago in another one that happened in Duxbury with a bidding that was done wrong because the bids were done on the basis of Johnson specs. So I went and qualified this Johnson, and when Johnson didn't get it, Johnson sued everybody. I was, I represented the company that actually ended up getting the bid when Johnson left. My client then realized that the golf business was not lucrative and got out of the business. And Johnson's got it back. But, um, those types of disputes, I've been involved in litigating those too. Uh, and we do that in any capacity that's warranted, John and Jamie.
Thank you. Karen?
Just a little follow-up. I'm a little confused with the proposal and what you just said, something about a flat fee structure. Um, you're proposing an hourly. So let's just, so walk through, so we, your town council, John's Lily. We call you, we have a question, you know, yeah, that's really a Bob question. You handed off the hand. Now, how does the structure of your, your, your proposal work?
We wouldn't build lean out.
But, but it's similar to what we're doing in Stonem.
Yeah.
So it's, and we have the flat fee arrangement on the labor side now.
Right.
But it's, in Stonem, people, if, you know, plugs aren't available, they can, hey, I guess the bottom line is we don't sweat the phone calls. That's, we don't, we're not counting phone calls, we're not counting emails. So if, if, if BAW had to handle the phone calls, I mean, we'll come up with a formula to provide amongst ourselves.
So like, in Stonem, for example, like, you just add five hundred dollars to the bill and I do all the telephone calls that come in on all that your routine matters and I don't even keep track of it. It's probably not a good deal for me, but it's the right thing to do sometimes. So that's how it appears on the bill that the town of Stonem, five-year-old, flat fee for that month. I think we already mentioned all the routine calls. If it's a matter of substance where there has to be an opinion written, then we're in a different scenario. But honestly, if I kept track of all the phone calls that I don't bill for, I probably could have enough money to put the kids through school. It just, it, I never wanted someone's ability to contact town council to be a barrier. I, I worked with Jenny in Go-Well and, um, I'll be talking to her almost every day when he was there on a mobile basis. And, um, many times on the weekends, if there was something else coming up, but, um, you know, I never used that in Go-Well, but, you know, Go-Well's a very different, near and dear to my heart. Been working there for thirty-one years this year. So, um, but, you know, Stonem wanted something a little different. They wanted the ability to have people call me whenever they wanted. And like Jamie said, giving your town officials the ability to talk to us when they know that there's no financial exposure usually produces a better decision and a cheaper decision in a lot of it. So certainly would not mind having that mentioned, if you would.
We're, we're currently charging five twenty-five a month for just a labor side, not a structure, that would change. Be the same.
And are you planning, do we have a separate contract for labor?
Yeah.
So are we planning, if you were selected, were to roll that all in together or, I don't know.
Separate contract.
Yes, we'll show you separate. And then how would this arrangement work? Would it be a contract with both of you? Is that what you're proposing, at the same rate or through you and you defer the land use issues to, um?
I think we'd set, be agreed that both firms would sign and the council would.
So a three-way?
Yes.
No double charge. I know, exactly, you can say double charge.
Actually, I just wanna clarify this. As, as a former board chair and a current select board member, I would just not call you. I'd call Jim and say, Jim, you know, this blah, 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 blah. You don't just take, take calls willy-nilly from every board.
Every town that I'm involved in has a policy that you have to get it cleared through the town administrator or manager.
I just wanna clarify that. All of a sudden, I'm imagining.
Right.
But, but let me give you an example. Like, in Go-Well, we had a stretch where we had, I don't know, five forty Bs in the course of about three years. And, um, basically, I needed to be in touch with the chairman of the CPA on a regular basis. And the chairman of the CPA in Go-Well was given permission to contact the director of getting clearance from Jim or through Jim's successful before. We needed to have that conversation with those types of events. And I, I, I can't think of a single complaint by anybody as a result of that. But normally, the policy in all towns is communication with town council, land use council, and that's the only thing that you're by the town administrator.
Right.
But, but one thing that should be clarified is, you know, obviously, this is no disrespect to Jim. We've known each other and worked together for about thirty years. You're the client, despite where it's the client. So if there is an issue or whatever reason the town administrator's not available, not involved, you know, we would expect that you can call us.
And we do take calls from members and we do pull back in. But sometimes there are situations where we do talk to them on a regular basis, and it just is what it is.
But that's for a flat fee.
Yeah. You, you would lock your own controls in terms of access. That's completely up to you. But, you know, I, I do wanna make it clear, you know, we've been, again, you have not been in this situation where there's been an issue with a town administrator or a high-level man here. But, you know, when we get into those things, we always wanna remind you, you're the client, the select board is the client.
And I have been in those situations where I had to replace a town administrator. Because the town administrator wanted to be replaced either. And it was a situation where, you know, I had to deal with the select board and explain the process, the procedures, the rules, the regulations, and all the notices out. And I unfortunately ended up with a message down which made it even more important that I was, had a good communicating relationship with the select board.
Okay. Um, we went through the standard pretty much. Um, Jim, did you want to ask my question?
No, I feel like I'm being jinxed now. You called us directly. No, I mean, I've worked with, with all three of them for a few years, so.
Right. Did you?
Cyber, right. Um, the new frontier, cyber liability. You guys dealt with cyber liability, dealt with issues of breaches and stuff like that.
Yeah, we actually, in Metfield, they actually got, uh, they were ransomed with Bitcoin a bunch of years ago. So we didn't, I didn't handle that directly. I did deal with some of the, the aftermath of that. But that was one of the first cases where they had a ransom situation and they were holding their data for ransom and they had to, um, pay with Bitcoin. So I, I only know about that because I've done, I've worked for council in Metfield, so I know what to change eventually. But I think that's probably where you're at, not like the liabilities surrounding, like, data and.
And the notices, notice application forms, stuff like that, if you're delegating that stuff.
Yes.
Yeah.
But one of the things on the practical side, and again, we come at it from the practical side. There is a wide range of skill and ability among IT professionals in the municipal world. So, you know, we, if, if they work on different schedules, they have different work practices. Maybe they're on the department managers. But we do try to work with management, with administration, to make sure that those people aren't talking what they need to be or in power. You know, it's great to have somebody in-house who's, you know, in your desktop work and, you know, straight up in print. But that's, it's much more high-level, more organized.
And we, we represent, um, departments of a county and they actually, you know, they provide IT access to some good towns in the county as well, so we represent the county. So we have their IT department that also represents, that also supports the other towns. And there are a lot of issues, to your point, Jim, that you've become aware of, just through that. With respect to, like, two-factor identification, there are practices and protocols and procedures that you have that in place in order to make sure that your liability, your, um, your insurance, your insurance is actually covering you in those situations where you've had a data breach or a financial breach because it was another issue, um, with respect to that. So we, we do have some experience with that in terms of the checklist and, um, liabilities.
And, uh, in the neighborhood of Mayor Marshall, the IT is down management, this department, this reform. They have level of sophistication in managing information technology. Marshall's always had a tenant, um, marketing media that was a leader in basically catching sexual predators that were online. The police department has developed a particular document in that regard. And now a police officer has been assigned and is managing the town's IT, which I think has been tremendous. I've had clients that have, uh, we, Marshall, like, a lot of communities, had just, uh, you know, some of the particular computer experience. But because of the significance of the issue, it's really worked out in an optimal way for Marshall to have police involved in that, in that type of issue. It's, it's benefited us in so many ways. It is, it is unusual. Go-Well, Go-Well, that shared ID between schools and town. And that's actually worked out, I think, for the benefit of everybody too, a little different model over there. But.
Susan, do you have a question?
I don't. I have a question. We're covering twenty-five towns primarily with labor, two towns, town council, bringing on one more. Only seven associates in your office. What, what are your plans with regards to supporting taking on an additional town as a town council? Because it's much broader than just major offices.
We were really thoughtful about that. And that's why I can't stress this now. We've been asked in a number of other communities to get on town council work and we've said no ever now. And the only reason that we said yes is it's time to get on. And it really because we know this town in a way and we also have the support structure where we're feeling we're ready to take that on in terms of our associates. I really wanna build the best municipal law firm in, in Antre, if you ask me. I believe we've been in the business for ten years and we've already grown and much as we've grown in ten years. And if we think about the other firms and how far, how long we've been around, a lot of these firms that we repeat with, been around for a hundred years, people been around for ten. So my job and my role in what I see, our vision is, is that to clearly develop this next level of attorneys that are gonna be the best municipal attorneys that are coming up through crimes. Because with respect to these gentlemen, we need to build it. We need to build the, um, infrastructure to have this next generation come up and come through and pass it down and pass it along. Because municipal law is a very specialized area and that's usually how a law order is talking about, right? Like, with heat, they're not, it's not the, it's not what every kid wants to do. They're not doing the core work. Drama is about municipal law, right? So we have to kind of find the talent and our job has been to find the talent and really create the municipal layers. And that's really what we've done with every single associate. No one has had the work experience that we've hired, only got municipal experience that we hired. We've built them and we've mentored them and we've trained them and we've taught them. And Bob's taught me stuff about municipal law and John's taught me stuff about municipal law. And our goal is to now grab that next generation and make sure that we're mentoring them and passing it down and passing it along.
Two, two or three years ago, this had come up, we would pass. We have a number of associates that have come on in the last five or six years. David Roy and Rich and Cena, two of our newer associates. They both have three or four years' experience. If someone called and had a query question two or three years ago, they couldn't answer. The only person who couldn't answer would have been me, myself, of course, Kevin, right? So we didn't have the bandwidth. And now they've been growing in those areas slowly. They've learned a lot, so we've developed that ability.
And that's every firm, but we have the one-on-one experiences that we wanna teach our associates to do at Clifford and Kenny West, which is the small boutique firm, West, the South Shore Boutique, West. And that's, we, we won't send somebody if we don't feel comfortable that they can't handle whatever we're sending them to.
And I think from my, from my perspective, again, Situate's close to home. It's a familiar place to me. You know the rules and regulations and familiar with people. And I think this was a good opportunity to demonstrate to you that, you know, municipal law can be done a little bit differently instead of all just in one firm. I'm doing the things that I love to do. They're doing the things that they love to do and I think you all benefit because we're coming to you with our strengths.
Thank you. Karen, do you have anything?
Uh, yeah, it is an interesting proposal and definitely had to be done with your strengths. You did list in your list of crime engagements and references in town capacity. What capacity are you?
Labor.
Just labor.
Just labor.
Nothing to do with anything else, kind of means clear.
And then be aware of the situations. Yes. Um, that, that was just a flag I wanted to just ask specifically what that was.
And we've had both Situate and Co-Hass for labor. We've had, so it's Situate for eight years, but we've had Co-Hass for six years. So we've been working for a long time with labor, but we never had a problem with it.
Well, and that, that, can I ask all the questions? So that does, you know, yes, there's certainly benefit and advantage to having local firm understand the issues that we, we all collectively face. But it raises a potential of conflict between communities because sometimes neighbors fight. And how do you see, you know, should that arise? So, you know, we've been on grave, the merchant at the moment, but what if coastal, what if a border issue came up? How do you propose to address those potential conflicts?
Because the, the only towns that we're doing general work with would be natural conflict on a specific topic. Really, I, I don't envision you having conflicts if these people are on the rock. So where it's just a labor issues, it wouldn't be any need for a conflict. You know, BAW's been practicing in this area for a long time. He's represented, you know, individual crimes. But, you know, when conflict issues come up with either one of us, that's where it helps to be able to trade on.
I mean, so I have dealt with this issue. I mean, so I have dealt with this issue, you know, not because there's been conflicts, but because of the potential for conflicts over the years. I mean, Orwell, which represented the longest, Marshall, it's a matter of, Marshall, there was a concern. And Orwell, does it mean that Orwell's going to get the most, sort of, shorter end of the stick if there was a fight? Well, the first case I ever did had to do with the Union Street Bridge, the bridge, street bridge, depending on which direction you're coming from. And a young man was killed in a boating accident at the bridge and it was, which town is going to be which happened in. There's always the prospect of a conflict. But the good thing here is, it relates to managers, they're typically minimal conflicts there for many. And they would be your, your YOJ people. So, but again, in 31 years of practicing municipal law, I think I've only had to step aside upon multiple towns, maybe once. And one time I did it to avoid, and it's actually ongoing right now, the self-help redevelopment authority in Rockland. I didn't want there to be, you know, parents have a conflict, so I stepped aside and we engaged a special council for Rockland so that people in Rockland didn't think that I was looking out for the self-help redevelopment authority's interest over the town of Rockland's interest. And it's a limited assignment for a couple of months. It's a lot of litigating tech issue. It's just a, is a zoning change going to happen on the base? I have a third of the bases in Rockland, a third of the bases in Abington and the rest is in Wayman. And it's not exactly that division, but it's those three towns. So proactively, I said to the town administrator, let's have somebody else come in. And that's how I handled it then, and it's been seen as still not a problem at all.
I guess, how much do you kind of, I guess it goes into your, into your training, but training aspect. But to kind of stop, stop us from worrying ourselves essentially. And I've talked about this before, but like there's, are the possible, so we have some hip or something. Really, really want to get that done. How strong are you to be like?
So, do you think, John and J D told you their philosophy, it's my philosophy too. One of the hardest things that we have to do as municipal lawyers is tell you no. And sometimes we have to tell you no. We tell you no, you can't do that, it's not legal. Or you're going to get yourself into trouble or a liability situation. It always drove me crazy because I did see some of my colleagues in other communities and I felt like they almost decided which way they were going to rule by depending on what was the popular thing to do. You don't keep your job very long. You might keep your job for that administration, but when the next one comes down the pipe that didn't like the prior administration do, you lose your job if you make decisions like that. So I've never shied away from saying, no, you can't do that. Or I'm sorry, we'll have to find another way because that's not going to work. And I'm sure that's their philosophy as well.
I mean, I deliver bad news pretty much for a living, so I can tell you the bad news that we can't do that. But I'm going to tell you what we can do as well and tell you where you can navigate and tell you how we can get there. We can't get there, but I, we got to protect this town. That's our job and that's where we're always going to have that alignment on just protecting this town from liability because that's, that's our biggest goal.
You know, I'll tell you a story and Jim knows this story, but there was a circumstance that occurred probably about 20 years ago, where a land use board made a decision that I disagree with. And the land use board came to the select board and said, we want a new lawyer, because that lawyer doesn't know what he's talking about. We want to do it. Unfortunately, I had Jim and the select board behind me and they said, no, you asked them for his opinion. You gave him the opinion. You didn't ask him if it still represents you and advocate for you. And they looked at me and said, can you advocate for this board even though you philosophically disagree with their position? I said, yes, I'll do a good job. I wanted the land court, I wanted the SJC advocating for a position that I still think is bad line. So again, I'm not afraid to say that when it comes up. But I also understand my role, I don't get to decide the policy of the town. I tell you what you can do, what you can't do, how much it's going to cost and what the results are likely to be.
Anything else? Let's see Nancy, Nancy, did everything? Karen, general.
Well, we thank you for submitting your convene Ozal and for coming in this evening, so late, so thank you. And we are not going to vote this evening, obviously, we're just still here being the candidates, but we will be in touch.
I do really appreciate it. I really definitely.
All the way down the street.
Take care.
All the cares.
Yes, makes it easy.
Plus people have the seats.
Pull up an extra chair.
It's got some snatches in the third.
Well, Pudini, welcome. My name's Warren Carr, I'm the chair for the select board, senior select board. Want my other members to introduce themselves, start to the right. Karen?
Yeah, I'm Karen Canfield, member of the board.
Karen Connolly, member of the board.
Andrew Rigorich.
Susan Harrison.
And I know you're familiar with Jim and Nancy as our current council, so thank you for resubmitting and thank you for coming in. For the format tonight, you know, we'd love to hear about why you want to continue, you know, what's changed? What I think you're, are you probably a little bit different? You know, obviously, we've been familiar with new services for many years, thank you for that. But moving on to the future, you know, how, how do you expect to service us a little bit differently? We did create some standard questions, we'll, we'll see how that goes, just because I think, you know, working with you for many years puts us in a little bit of a different situation and we have some reform questions as well.
Sure, thank you. Well, nice to be here. My name is attorney Dave DeLuca. I think I've met each of you briefly from an earlier time, just this week, actually, we had a town meeting together. With me tonight is my colleague Joe Proctor, who's been with the office since 2012.
May 2022.
To his right is Madison Harris Parks, who's also been with us for two years.
Nine years.
Yep, and to Madison's face is Ariana Impresia. Ariana has been with us an equal amount of time. But the colleague that's missing tonight is Karis Norwood, who was on our proposal as the alternate in this case. Karis unfortunately is tied up with the town meeting, ended on the town. And you know how that goes.
Sorry about that.
She was not going to miss that and I did not want to miss this tonight, that you guys had to decide for us. So I thought, you know, I'd bring a couple of members of our office to introduce and also to present themselves. I think is a great opportunity to let people know. I, on the other hand, have been with the office for quite some time, since the late 80s. Worked very closely with their former council, Jim Chuni, for quite some time. And I personally represent a handful of towns now for several years, including Norwood and Danvers and Holbrook and Breaken. And one of the things that, you know, you probably are aware of with our office, we've had a lot of town council fires for a long time. Milton, for example, and Mader, those towns are what we call legacy towns that go back to the 1980s. Situate is getting close, we've been named council in Situate now for probably 10 years. And, you know, it's, it's no secret, there's been some turnover recently. That's not always the case, but just we had a little bit of a dip with a council that moved on in December of 2022 and then more recently, my colleague Kevin Freitag, who's a council peer, moved on in August. And I stepped in from August to today. Yeah, that's unpleasant for everybody. The good news is, I'm hoping that it has been somewhat seamless, that we've been able to sort of navigate those, those rough waters well enough so that it doesn't negatively impact the town and the services we're able to provide to the town. That's, that's our goal always. So I want to assure you of that and that's our intention. You're all probably familiar enough with our office. We've got 28 lawyers at the moment, we're right here on South Shore, we're probably one of the biggest law firms south of Boston, certainly in town council practice here. We have four senior practitioners, including myself and several colleagues like Joe and Ariana and Madison, who have been with us a couple of years and are clearly making, I think, very good progress in municipal, just among other things. I mean, we, we are, as you know, do a lot of labor employment. We represent one of the school districts and for that reason, we're quite familiar with the public sector work. It's, you know, it's different in every town, but yet it's the same. Public records, open meeting, ethics, licensing, land use, procurement, town meeting matters and litigation. Those are principally the areas of practice that we, that we concentrate on. You know, we're, as, as town council, we're, we're councilors. And our job is kind of as a general practitioner to your board and to department heads to try to diagnose and to medicate and to resolve issues that come before the town on a regular basis. We're, we're looking to, as I said, provide advice to regular people who just want to do the right thing. That's what I think we find really most important in town council practice. As, as you know, we've been in Situate for quite, quite a while, to know a good number of your department heads and I hope there's a degree of confidence in the work that we are doing. We, we expect that we'll continue with our expertise in all of those areas and that our, my younger colleagues will in fact step in and, you know, take the lead frankly on some of the matters that you would have. And I note that President Madison is working here, who'd be your department master on litigation matter. I have been personally involved with other issues, will be planning zoning. And we find it very satisfying. So again, we, you know, we don't always have the answer right away, but here's what we do have. And that's a commitment to responsiveness. It's, I think, very important for board members and department heads to know that I'm going to pick up my cellphone when it rings. I'm going to return an email when one comes in. And we're going to provide to you the kind of responsiveness that I think you're entitled to expect. To me, that's, that's most important. I'm not always going to have the answer, but I'm going to tell you where I am with something. I'm going to give you maybe even a preview of where I think the cases or matters should go. That comes with a little bit of experience, but what's most important is for you to know that you are going to get top-notch service, that's our goal. And with that, we, you know, consider ourselves to be very efficient. We have the resources so that if I can't get to an opinion today, I can see my colleague Joe, Madison or Ariana and they'll be right on. So those are the advantages of having a little bit bigger office with the resources that we have. So again, I'm very comfortable and very confident and I hope that you will be too in continuing our representation. One final word, and that is that on the rates, we have given you, I think, a very competitive rate for town council practice and it's certainly below market, if you will, from what we would put forward in a new proposal. I don't consider this to be a new client proposal, so therefore, you know, I feel comfortable in voting a rate that was a bit below market. So with that, we're more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Just going to lead off with question one from the standard question, just that I think it segues a little bit. So I know Carissa's not here this evening, but who would be the lead? So an issue comes up, who does Jim call, who does our player call? Is it you, is it Carissa? Who takes the lead and then how do we disentain anymore?
It would be me. But I'll, I'll be frank with you, if, if it's a complicated land use matter, I'm going to lean on Karis. Because Karis has 40 years' experience, for example, to a greater extent than I do. So here is, I guess, the best way to put it up, sort of a modified team approach. So depending upon the type of case or matter that it is, it could go to, to either you or Karis ultimately. And then, you know, we could, we could get the assistance as needed. So for example, licensing matter is going to come to me. I mean, I do all the firearms licensing cases in the office from the Metalla Times. That's because, you know, I have a little bit more experience than everyone else. Rather than have someone who has spread themselves thin, we try to do everything. We have certain specialties, if you will, even within the office. But no, the principal point of contact.
And so those larger issues you take on or you hand off and then the communication goes to someone like Joe? Like how, how is that going to work?
Well, it, it could come back through me to whoever it is that's your point of contact. Or more ideally, if there's an opportunity, for example, to have a face-to-face meeting, Joe's going to come with me. And he's going to sit in and be involved with, you know, whatever it is. And yeah, and I, I would expect that that contact may continue if, you know, he now has complete control. So yeah, I think that's likely. So I mean, it has been in my experience when, you know, I was in those chairs, going up to Nader, going up to Norwood, going up to Milton, following Jim, John Flynn, Mike LaHaine, those senior lawyers in our office. That's, that's how I got here.
Thank you. Susan, you go to the left, ask a little more.
Sure, have questions?
Or you can modify Susan, obviously.
Do you think it's the biggest legal risk for municipalities today?
I don't know, did you see the video?
Oh, no mention?
Yes. Oh my gosh, that's just so sad. I, you know, for all of us, all of us, like we said, regular people just trying to do the right thing. You know, we were caught up in this kind of, just this conducive attitude. Anybody can say whatever, whenever, I guess. But no, the risks to municipalities today, you know, I think are obviously multiple. Right now, you know, the NDK zoning, the Canada's licensing, those are really the hottest issues right now. You know, I'm not terribly concerned about liabilities. We all have insurance carriers covering those liabilities that, you know, exist everywhere. But the other thing that's really challenging right now is your ability to keep and retain quality employees. I mean, you have to compete like all private ministry has to compete for, including ourselves, to keep and retain really talented professional employees. It's very difficult. So I know that that's a challenge for municipalities as well as any other ongoing business.
A follow-up, how would you advise a municipality mitigate those risks?
Well, again, good people. It's probably your best asset, having solid, long-term employees that have the professional experience to make judgments and give advice. That, I think, is probably the best opportunity for any town. The organization is certainly solid here in Situate, better than the most towns. So I think, you know, mitigation really is important by the people that are serving those positions.
Good TV. Yeah, I guess my question is, can you explain more about how you deal with conflicts? Especially municipalities possibly? Some towns may be upset and that just.
Yeah, no, that's sort of.
How do you handle it internally and how that's going to work? If you see any conflicts now.
Well, but, I mean, we do some special council work in Colassee. And I know that Situate is engaged with Colassee in some manner that, you know, would require us to provide notice to both parties and get consent so that if we were to represent one or the other, that everyone would be on board with that. We're going to be totally upfront with whoever it is that, you know, has the interest. And we'll make sure that everybody's on notice. And if there's an impermissible conflict, well, then, you know, we'd segue. Whichever client it was that needed to get substitute counsel, we'd make sure that, you know, it would be seamless. So yeah, it does occasionally happen. And then more particularly, I'm not sure that we, our office represents your school department, but it's usually a more inherent problem when we.
You don't know that?
I don't think we do. Yeah, I don't think we do. But in a lot of towns, we do. And then we really have to navigate, you know, any issues that have become between the town and the schools. I don't think that's inherent.
I might get built on that a little bit. How involved have you been with the relationship with Situate?
How involved have I been? Well.
Because you're one of the principal.
Yeah. So I guess my gym is here. I mean, I think I was involved in a couple of litigation matters, so that would be more than ten years ago.
But more recently, like the past three years?
The past three years, well, I recently had a license against the chief of police. It's got something. I think beyond that, I've had really just sort of tangential business. I hadn't been involved in a town meeting or any of the land use issues until now.
So how will that change moving forward? And I'd love to hear like what's the expertise is of the folks that you brought with you. I would imagine that our previous town council from your firm wasn't a principal.
No.
At all. So just kind of curious, you know, what that oversight looks like? Has that changed? Is that the same way in which you operate now?
Well, Kevin was a senior practitioner. He had a good deal of experience coming in.
Right, but I think we had Kevin for what, eight months, a year?
Yeah, less.
Not even?
Not even. So, but he came in, you know, he had a lot of experience there because he had enormous experience in other towns. So he was well-suited to step right in in Situate. Again, so far as I know, it was seamless. Likewise, you know, when he left abruptly, he agreed, needed to make sure that it was going to be still the same way. Now, at this point, per truth myself and Charis, I'm confident we can handle that with the help of some of our younger colleagues who, you know, can do more of the speed or can do all the stuff that needs to get done, whether that's, you know, memo writing, research, brief writing, and that kind of work that, you know, also is expected. But in terms of, you know, the kind of day-to-day stuff, we would expect to be able to handle that pretty seamlessly.
To kind of jump in, you know, I've been, pretty much my entire time at the firm, I've been working for Situate. In fact, Cindy Maro is council here. I'll help her with analysis of contractor disputes, other kinds of matters like that. Once Kevin took over, the same kind of thing, I didn't get the background to support him on projects. But also, there's some litigation matters in the district court that I've worked on after his departure. You know, I'm pretty much in the handling on my own with Dave kind of offering support, you know, a secondary kind of role. So even if Dave himself hasn't been focused entirely on Situate, it's impressive us having worked with him. We can get this, even if our incentive and firm is employee extensive, firm enough, but just.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think Madison has an active litigation case right now.
Yeah, yeah, so that was, I first started working with Joe with Cindy. So that was a case that had been brought on by Harbor Master when Cindy was here. So then I stayed on the case when I've been transitioned to Kevin. He kind of was the oversight, but again, I was the maintainer to him. And again, I'm still the one that's been working closely with Harbor Master on that matter. You know, even as kind of my oversight changes, I still, you know, have been there from the beginning, so that's.
And are you the point of contact for you?
Mostly Steve.
Mostly just trying to.
Mostly Steve, yeah. Steve.
But then, right, from there, having talked with Steve for, you know, with that case, then, you know, he said that he is a point of contact for if other, like code of conduct issues or other just questions have come up, he's, you know, known that he can reach out to me. And then, you know, maybe, you know, we'll copy Dave or say, you know, I'll say, oh, I, you know, I can maybe enter the funnel a bit faster than Dave and then, you know, follow up with him if I have questions. It's a little more, more getting back, getting back to Steve, so.
Which leads me to ask the question. So when you're working with you, are we getting billed your time and your time?
No, we're very, we're careful with that. And thanks to your town administrator, we pointed out to be on one occasion, it looks as though something was missed, which I corrected right away. That's my job, is to make sure that, you know, there's no duplication of that. We all need assistance here and there.
Yes, and we all need to learn.
Right.
I'm at the end of this, we dispute that, but we have to be concerned about.
Oh, yeah, for sure. Yeah, yeah, no, and we'll make sure that that's not the case. Like I said, if I were alone, you know, trying to handle Situate, I'd be stretched this thin. Now, you know, I have the robust ability to call on talent that might not otherwise exist in a smaller office.
Just, I'm going to do a little twist, just because you do have the experience with our community. Is the Mr. who asked about, you know, or some, I forget who asked the question about the biggest risk facing municipalities. Just having observed our firm over our town, our community for a while, what do you see as the things that we should have on our radar from a legal perspective, having worked with us for a while?
Well, what I do know, and it was very evident from the county, is environmental concerns are huge. And we're uniquely positioned here with all of the coastline, we have all the risks along with that. We all know that Channel Seven comes here first.
Great visual.
So, no, so we know that environmental, some, but a couple of environmental cases that are leading to such other cases. So those are really on our radar, sorry. And again, I apologize that Charis can't be here because she has experience with, done a direct, deep experience with DEPI and EPA. And I think that that's especially relevant here.
Has she been brought in on cases over the years? And how long has she been with us?
Oh, she's been with us for fifteen years.
Oh, okay, so she is.
Yeah, so she was in Situate since, I believe she's been involved on sort of a case-by-case basis. She was in help, write me about it.
Ariana, if you haven't spoken yet, I'm curious where you fit into this picture, how you have related to Situate, if you have yet.
So I haven't had any experience personally with Situate, but I have in other matters similar to what Candice and Joe have said. Well, we need some quick research now or an answer to drafting demos for different municipalities. But pretty much the same, working with a partner, working directly.
I consider Ariana, our help of workers to be.
We all love some of the.
Oh, yeah, they are a challenge.
Yes, they are.
And that it requires very quick mobilization. Ariana's the mayor.
Thank you.
Sure. Being council from us ten years waiting has been the biggest challenge or been some of the biggest cases or things that you've worked on for us?
Well, I know that, as I said, I think I had a special permit case involving the development of some property. I think it was down in Situate Harbor. We went to the appeals board. I know that this building itself was the subject of a great deal of concern and ultimately some litigation. So, yeah, with the office as long as I am, I'm sort of familiar with that. And I've been to, you know, there's like board meetings and, you know, I had to work through what was at the time, as I recall now, a very nasty alcohol-related discipline case that, you know, takes on a lot of time and a lot of energy. So I'm comfortable in those situations as well.
Jim, did you want to ask your cyber question?
Sure. Do you have emerging area, cybersecurity, cyber law, and you guys have experience with that, the notification process? All that thing, because that seems to be something that's probably.
Jim, you're absolutely right. And I haven't personally had an opportunity to engage that certainly on behalf of the town council. You know, we strive to stay as current as possible. You'll see from, you know, the previous materials, we try to stay out of the front on any emerging issues. We do a lot of seven-hour work, we do a lot of client alerts, and that likely we got a front sometime very soon.
Can you, we certainly have, oh, sorry, Jim, you have a phone? What is your philosophy with regards to town meeting? Preparation, what the role is during town meeting, how do you approach that? And we have experience of some of your, obviously, pre-experience, but moving forward, what is that?
Well, town meeting, in my opinion, is all about preparation. The best town meetings are the ones that are up there. You guys are like, as I, you know, in the time that we've lived together, we have, you know, really capable department heads. We're able to put together a warrant in form, motions and all that's necessary. We're available and we'll work with your department heads to make sure that things are at least in the right form. Any research that needs to be done, it's done before you. There's nothing worse than on town meeting floor, you know, getting blindsided. So it's all about preparation. And, you know, if everything is well-prepared, then, you know, we'll certainly stand by. But we don't want to put ourselves in the middle of legislation that's for your town meeting members and some of your town officials to do, or, you know, give an opinion where necessary. But, you know, we certainly don't want to consider ourselves a sixth member of the board or a town meeting member. Those decision makers are there for a reason.
Does he write us notes?
Yeah.
Any additional questions? Nancy, you know how we go.
Yeah, I do, I do have a question.
Okay, there you go.
So I understand that you did change your billing software, and there were a lot of bumps in the road on that. And we haven't really been billed that much this year or so. Going forward, what is your philosophy towards providing billable hours to the town to reimburse?
Yeah, so we bill monthly. And we'd like to get our time in every month so that you will get a timely bill of home for a time spent previously. So here we are near the end of October, middle end of October. All of our time, for anybody who's working in Situate, should be in by first of November. And we would like to get a bill out to a town council by November fifteenth for the month of October. And it should be just that way going forward. And it's not good for us, it's not good for you, to be getting billed in November the time that was spent in July, August, and September. So, no, I would not expect that to be the case going forward.
As I've rectified, sorry.
It's really a sort of point of personal pride, frankly, quite honestly. Every attorney is responsible for getting the time in on time in order that we can get bills out on time through our work performed that is, you know, within thirty days of that time. If that hasn't happened, it's going to happen going forward.
Top on higher, they will bring up payable yet this year?
Well, yes, because you have.
We haven't received it, though.
No, we've received some, but some of them have been sent back to be rebuilt. So we haven't paid, I wanted to check this year if we can pay it yet.
Well, I don't know, you know, where that is, but at least the bill that I looked at was within the last month or so. Should be ready to go. I'll check on what has existed now.
We have our planner, I wrote for you. Do you have any questions, Karen?
Yeah.
I do have a question. Is there any expertise in the firm in dealing with wireless communication bylaws?
Me and Trish, yes. I know Charis has been directly involved with a couple of other communities in those issues. They're, as you know, they're federally regulated, they're virtual raised. And there's not a whole lot of flexibility that we have locally in terms of, you know, citing wireless facilities. So there, you know, there's not a whole lot of wiggle with that stuff. But Charis, I know, has been directly involved with those matters.
Any additional? I just want to follow up on the, in your presentation, in your application, or submittal, whatever you want to call it. You do mention you prepare to conduct office hours at town hall. And I just wondered if you could, I just didn't understand that.
So that varies really from town to town. And it really is. And it really is what works for you. And sometimes we are busy, busy enough that it makes sense for us to per time decide sometimes once a month, sometimes twice a month, to spend two or three hours at town hall, we call it town hall, office hours, so that the chief of police or the town planner has something that's right at the edge of your desk, and they want to talk, we have to talk. Instead of this sort of back and forth and delay with emails and telephone calls, we're there and very often can resolve or at least provide advice on the spot. I like town hall hours, because it really is mutually beneficial, moves things along. Sometimes there's a takeaway from those town halls, okay, I'll get back to you with something more substantial. But very often, we can give advice in real time, which I think everyone appreciates. So whether or not you want to do that is really a personal choice on...
Good evening, and we appreciate you coming out. We're going to, you know, pull together all our notes and make a decision in the next, you know, week or two or three, so...
And let me offer as well, if there's, you know, the tension, the anxiety out, us return, I'm sure Charis will make herself available.
That'd be great, thank you.
We'd like to take the time. She was disappointed with that, to me.
We understand that, so we know, we know it was a quick, and not a lot of options, but a quick invite to come in, so thank you. And yeah, we'd probably love to have an opportunity to see her still.
Okay, good to be here.
Okay. Thank you so much. Make sure you guys can sleep, lucky you.
I know. What are we doing now?
There's many camps. Yeah. Yeah, I'll talk to you, Mark.
Thanks so much. Thank you. Good night.
Right, so just a matter of business, maybe, yeah. So for matters of business, next steps, I think if everybody can just take some time, we do have the evaluation sheet that we utilized previously, so you can just do a judgment or anything for it. Let's see how we can get that in in the next week or so. Who is...
I'll be checking references on Myers.
Check your references when?
On Myers and Harrington.
Okay.
I'll be checking on that.
All right, thank you. So usually, we give those to our comments to, our sheets to...
We should probably give it to Arianna, she can tab it like them, or she has them, so maybe we should just do it.
Okay.
Send it to Jim and Nancy.
Okay.
Did you guys do that?
Yeah, send it to Jim and Nancy.
Okay.
Is there any...
Can you send it electronically?
Anything else, guys, or if you'd be able to just...
Send by Susan?
Sam?
What?
I'm sorry.
What again?
What's your name? Or did you want discussion?
Well, I just, before we departed, we, I just didn't know if you had any comments if you wanted to add at this time, or no?
At this time?
Well, you stopped it a little time.
We want to be fly on the wall.
That's funny. You did a good job. I hydrated things. Stop it.
I moved it.
I moved it. Can't feel second, all in favor.
Thank you very much. Come on.